All right. Good evening, everybody. I would like to officially call the Joint Committee of the School Committee and City Council meeting to order. It is April 6th at 6:01 PM. I would just like to hereby notify the audience and all attendees that this, there is a video and audio recording being made of this meeting. And it's also being streamed on the city's television. So we will start with a roll call of attendance. Do you want me to do it? Oh, okay. Councillor Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Councillor Rivera?
Here.
Councillor Rivera, oh, I'm sorry. School Committee Member Rivera Cologne?
Here.
School Committee Member Willihan?
Here.
And I'm here myself. Missing is Councillor Murphy Rombaletti. Positivity Allegiance? All right. So getting right to it on new business. The first item on our agenda is an ordered filed by City Councillor Israel Rivera to discuss the possibility of collaborating to offer the trade certificates to adult residents at the Holyoke Dean Tech Campus. I'd like to entertain a motion to allow Councillor Rivera to come in, join the meeting and discuss his order.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councillor Rivera, please join us. Either seat.
On the chair that you just dropped.
That one's jinxed.
Tim, do we have the presentation or no? Those chairs are heavy. Those are better than what we got in City Council.
They were upgraded a few years ago.
We trying to be like, yeah. Well, um, thank you guys. Um, I guess for me, um, if I may, right?
Yes, please.
So for me in filing this order, the intention is, is we have a technical high school. Or I mean, it may be different to what it was when I was in high school. But for, for me, it's seeing how we could try to utilize that after hours while it's not being in use in a way where we could try to promote and, and build up our, uh, how do you say it? The rest, the people that live in the community with regards to offering them opportunities, um, to educate themselves in some of the trades. And for me, when I, I know from when I first came out of prison, those were one of the first things that I was looking into. But it's very hard to look for schools or classes for welding or plumbing or any of that kind of stuff when you're past a certain age. Um, usually those classes are taught in high school. Uh, and you have to kind of know somebody to get into certain unions or not necessarily, but we all know how that game is played. Um, so ultimately for me is, this is a gem that we have here in the city. Um, and it's trying to find ways to, obviously we can't do that overnight, but it's just like to, to start having the conversation on how we could provide some classes, whether it's some CNA classes or stuff like that, working with Holyoke Community College. Cause I think originally in the order is, is inviting Christina Royale too as well, um, to see if they can help, like create a larger collaboration between either HCC, STCC and Dean Tech, um, just to be able to provide this service for the residents that live within the city. Um, and that's pretty much it for me.
Mr. Soto, I'll let you, uh...
Yeah. So I looked, uh, we, we have been in conversation with Holyoke Community College, um, on the possibility of partnering with them, uh, to, for them to be able to utilize our health assisting space and advanced manufacturing space. Um, there would, there would, uh, be a significant amount of funding required to, to like upgrade those shops so that our students and whatever programs would go into there are actually using equipment that's being used in the field now. So we, you know, on our side for sure, we're making a significant amount of investments. I've pretty much given a blank check to, uh, to Al Gates and said like, look, what do you need for your, for the shops to be upgraded? And, and we've been working with the, uh, the CTE teachers to, to try to identify like what, what equipment purchases do we need to make in all of our shops to just bring them up to date and utilizing Esser money? I think that's a perfect use for Esser money. Uh, these shops have not been, uh, you know, upgraded in, in many years due to funding constraints. And now that we have this one time funding source that is going away, uh, it's a perfect opportunity to invest in something like that, that lasts forever and doesn't carry on recurring costs. So I am for sure looking to upgrade our shops. The, the conversations we've had with HCC were around health assisting and advanced manufacturing. A few things about adult ed programming though. You know, and I know you guys are probably tired of hearing this word net school spending, but, um, I, I will reiterate that there are four thing, four, there's more than that four, but I would say the, the four that are commonly talked about, um, that are not eligible for net school spending, which means, you know, 88% of our budget comes from the state. But they say, this is how much you need to spend and these are some things that you can't use this money on. Um, that's transportation, adult education, any leases greater than three years old, and any capital improvements, um, that are above 125,000. So that's, that's the reason why like, we can't just save our money and build a building. And we can't just, you know, um, you know, pay for central office without the lease, without getting extra funding from the city council. Adult education is one of those things. Right now, we do have an adult education program, um, that we've blended with, with, uh, grant funding that we have through, you know, the, the Juntos Grant and, uh, you know, our indirect cost fund that at the success center, currently we have about 39 adults enrolled, um, in, in, in programming designed to get them the, their GED equivalent, which is the, the ISAT now. But really what it comes down to, Councillor Rivera, is, is if that's something that the city wants to do, then, then we just need a funding appropriation for it. Or like, we need to create partnerships with like HCC where they're using their staff. Like, we'd be happy to share the space if it, if, you know, that's one way we could partner with these.
So that's, that's kind of where the, the idea for me is like, that's why I, I believe I co-asked for Christina Royale to be here, but it's, I'm sure she's super busy too as well. But like, the idea for me is I, I don't, I totally get that a lot of the funding that is allocated to you guys from the state and from the feds is mostly strictly spent on a, in a specific way because it's, it's attached to certain things. Most funding that you get from these institutions tell you how to spend your money.
Yeah.
And they do it intentionally. Um, but for me with filing this order, it's actually trying to get the city to, to, to help start this initiative at the same time, right? So it's having the conversation with the mayor to say, hey, listen, there's an opportunity to, to do a auto mechanic school for, for, for parents or not, or for older adults that, that are not in school anymore that would like to do that. Um, ISAT and GED, uh, programming is always good and great, but like the next step for me is like, how can we get people back to work that necessarily don't want to work? Or I mean, not that they don't want to work, but they don't want to work in an office, right? Or they don't want to work at a stop and shop, but they like to be a mechanic. They like to be, do welding. They like truck driving, things like that. So it, um, it's trying to find a way to do that. And if, if there's opportunities from the city to either collect CDPG funding or whichever way, right? There's other opportunities. There's different places. Um, there's different collaborations that could possibly be made with, with different universities and colleges try to do all that. But it's just getting the okay and seeing where the school department is at with it, right? So if it's, if, if it's totally okay, which I'm, I was totally sure about that, it's just having the conversation and starting the conversation. So that way we could have that, cause it doesn't happen, have to happen today. But if it happens 10 years from now, at least we have some sort of programming coming out of this Dean Tech, being utilized at night where moms and dads or whomever comes through and they're able to get their welding certificate, get the certificate to, to, to whatever it is, whatever they would like to do that we offer here at this space.
Yeah.
It, it, it provides another avenue for that. Not everybody wants to go to HCC and do their core classes and do all the other stuff. Some people just want to go straight to doing what you guys do at Dean Tech.
Yeah. So here's where we stand. Like, um, our shops definitely need, brought up to like, more commonly used in the field, uh, equipment. And I'm not saying all of them because we've done a lot, you know, we, we redid our culinary shop. We just invested, you know, a quarter of a million dollars into our culinary. Um, so there's, we've done a, we've done a lot, but we...
That's all perfect to me because I feel like I'm hearing what you're saying and it's kind of like the concept for me, right? From the beginning, when I thought about it, it's like, if we partnered with STCC for a welding program for whatnot, we kind of try to ask them if they could invest, right? At the same time. Because we're putting up the space and we're recruiting people that they would be able to utilize on their numbers at the end of the day, because they needed big numbers too. And we'd be able to utilize in a way where it benefits our city. So it's the same with HCC. It would be the same with Westfield State. It'd be the same with Mass or other, wherever at. Like, we have a bunch of colleges within this community, um, within Western Mass. And it's trying to like tap into that, because they tap into Holyoke a lot. So it's kind of, I kind of try to make a reciprocal relationship, if it's possible. Um, and just trying to have the conversation and throw it out there for the school committee to hear it, for you guys to hear it. And then hopefully the, the mayor, it'll get to the mayor. I haven't spoken to him about it. But like, at the end of the day, it's, it's an initiative that I feel like would benefit the city overall, um, twofold. Cause there are some kids that went to Dean, right? And didn't finish their stuff. And then later on, when they're 25, 26, to say that they want to go back and be able to pick up somewhat of where they left off a long time ago. And there's an, there's a program that provides that opportunity for them. Thank you guys for your time too as well.
Anybody have any comments or discussion? All right. Thank you, Councillor Rivera.
I gotta go back?
Or you could have took both of his...
All right. Uh, yes, Ms. Tinsley Williams? Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number two. I don't see... Councillor Rivera, are you looking for any action to be taken on the order?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, it's, it's definitely not a waste of time. We're happy to hear.
Well, the council side will just... That's what I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number two. I don't see any of the councillors present who filed this order, but we do have an order in front of us filed by Councillors Jordan, McGee and Vacan that the school receiver provides city council with specific plans and goals HPS needs to achieve in order to regain local control. Um, I know you had referenced a past presentation, so if you want to just point reference to that, seeing as they're not with us today.
Yeah, I've already, uh, presented this at city council chambers. Um, and this question has come up several times. There is not a checklist to get out of receivership. There is not a, uh, you know, the, the person and the individual that makes that decision is the commissioner along with the board. The closest thing to a roadmap of, of getting out of receivership, it's not a checklist. It's not like if you do this, 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 and this, then you're out of receivership, is our strategic plan. And out of respect for the school committee members here, we did go through, uh, in detail, uh, our process that we're taking to, to get input on what, what revisions need to be made. Um, I don't want to go through the whole presentation because we just did that at our last school committee meeting. So anybody interested in, in seeing what our process is, uh, for refining our strategic plan, which there's goals identified in there, there's priorities identified in there. And there's a real strong focus on what things need to happen to get better outcomes for kids. Ultimately, that's it, right there. You know, get better outcomes for our students academically. And, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that have happened. We've increased our graduation rate, reduced our dropout rate. There's been a lot of work around the 10, there's a lot of things that the state has, does look at, um, and that they're pleased with. But when you look at our, our academic achievement data, it hasn't, it hasn't quite increased to the, to the extent that would show that, you know, we're making substantial progress to getting out. But like, again, there's no checklist. The closest thing we have is our strategic plan. And we are in the process right now of, of going out to the community and getting feedback from everyone. And it's going to be something that we do every year because, uh, we, we, we did our strategic plan. And I committed to every year, just, uh, going through a process where we review, um, how are we doing? Just like we ask our, our, we grade our students, right? And we, we, uh, you know, we send report cards home. We ask our teachers to, uh, you know, we evaluate our teachers. We ask our teachers to review student data, to adjust their practice. We're no different at the district. We have to look at our strategic plan, assess how we're doing, continue to get, go out and try to get feedback on how to make refinements and improve, uh, improvements to our plan. And then, and then act on those. Come, come out with a strong plan and then do it again. What's working? What's not working? What changes do we need to make? Um, and that's, that's a commitment that I've made. We have a ton of information on our strategic plan on www.hps.holyoke MA.us, forward slash strategic planning. Uh, the whole plan is there. We had over 1,500, uh, people provide input to create it. There's a ton of components in there that, that, uh, made up the strategic plan. We set a vision. We set a mission. We got a new tagline, Juntos Podemos, Together We Can. Uh, we established what our core beliefs are as a district and, and what our equity commitments are that we're gonna, that are gonna guide us through all of this work. Um, we set, uh, establish a learner profile, which is, you know, what, what qualities and, uh, should our students have? To measure that we're, we're, we're successfully serving them. Set ourselves some goals and priorities and, and, and annual benchmarks every year that we look at and that we report out quarterly to the school committee and to, to, to DUCI so that they can see what progress we're making towards meeting that, uh, the goals identified in, in the strategic plan. One second. Let me just see. So in this presentation, you know, uh, that I presented to the school committee and again, anyone who's interested in seeing it, uh, we provided an update on, we have 17, uh, strategies that we started, benchmarks that we set at the beginning of the school year, and most of them are on track. There's three of them that were slightly behind track. Um, one of them around attendance, like attendance has been a struggle. And we, we, there was a delay in being able to launch our attendance campaign. Not that that's going to be the, the silver bullet. We want to, you know, that is going to be an important initiative, but, uh, we, we still have a significant amount of students that aren't attending school regularly and we need to really dig in. That's why they were slightly behind track on one of those. And then the other one is around a mentoring program that we committed at the beginning of the school year. We were going to launch a mentoring program. And, um, I'm happy to report that we are getting back on track. Right now, I'm shoulder tapping a bunch of people to see if they want to serve as mentors to some eighth grade students at Holyoke Middle or PEC. Uh, it requires just sitting down with them once every two weeks for, uh, during their lunch period. And, and talking to them about transitioning to high school and, and what to expect. And really just serving as a mentor. So I've, I've asked Councillor Rivera, I've asked some of my own friends that I know in the community that could serve as really good role models. And, um, a few people have already said yes. Last week, we only had six people. I want, uh, you know, it's, it's important. Not everybody that wants to be a mentor is going to be able to be a mentor. You know, we, we need to make sure that it's a perfect fit or a good fit, matching the mentor to the mentee. Um, and, you know, so it, it's not just like, oh, go over there. Like, we, we really want to train people on proper mentoring tactics. And we don't want somebody that's not going to be able to commit, right? Um, you know, that we don't want somebody that's going to let our students down even, even more. Uh, we need somebody that's going to make that commitment to, to be there. And I hope that that program could grow. Like, right now, we're targeting 20 to 25 students this year for the rest of the school year. And, and as we learn from this process, I hope, I hope that we can get, uh, spread it even more. Right now, we're just opening it up to district staff and people that I'm like shoulder tapping. There's some academic outcomes that, that are listed in our strategic plan. We went through all of those. Um, we're, you know, we're not where we want to be, uh, in terms of students being at grade level. But, uh, the next slide here, I don't even know where, this doesn't look like... Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know why. We usually have it color coded, but, um, there is a slide here that, that, um, shows our growth, which I definitely wanted to, to highlight. And I can't find it, but one of our, sorry, one of our, one of our, one of the things that we really look at is growth. And that's important. And I think it's this slide. It's just not color coded. We looked at, the previous slide was around students being, being at grade level and what our goals were. You saw a lot of red there, but more importantly, um, in a district like Holyoke, making one year of growth is not enough. You know, we, uh, we, so we made a very aggressive commitment to making 1.3 years of, of, uh, grade level growth as measured on the STAR assessments that we take. And when, when we pulled that data this year, um, we're on track to meet that, which is a good thing. Uh, the baseline that the, the, the goal that we set for ourselves at the end of the school year, we're already there. So, um, that, that's an important measure that we're going to con, always look at, you know, because that's important, especially after the pandemic. When you saw academic outcomes slide for everybody across the state, one of the things the state's really focused on is growth. And, and we're, you know, we're going to be meeting our goals this year for, for, uh, growth on STAR. And then there's things that, um, are not academic that the state looks at, like chronic absenteeism. And, uh, we look, we ourselves also identified some things that we want to look at that are not, non-academic qualities. And one of them is, you know, we want to, uh, we have a panorama survey that goes out to students every year, to staff every year and to families every year. And we want to measure, you know, one of the most important questions that we ask our students is, is, uh, whether they feel like they belong at school. And, you know, we hope that that number could be at 65%. Um, we did get our results. I think that the, the, the actual this year was about 52%, but I want to highlight that in the panorama survey, it doesn't say, do you feel like you belong? Or do you not feel like you belong? The scale is more, um, sometimes, usually, never, um, always. So when we measure, when I tell you that 52% of our students feel like they belong, it's, um, always and usually. There was a significant amount of students that said sometimes, and if you add those students in, it's more like 80, 80%. Um, but 20% of our kids are still saying like, you know what? I don't feel like I belong. And that's something we need to dig into and we need to monitor that every year. And then the, the last three that we added, the, the first time this year is we have, we have a commitment that we want to live up to, to build an anti-racist, inclusive and culturally responsive community. And so we thought it was important to add those questions into panorama and ask students how we're doing, ask staff how we're doing, and ask families how we're doing, uh, living up to that commitment. Um, so we'll, you know, we'll be able to report out on those once we get them. And then these are the, um, DUCI ones that, that they look at. So students, uh, making progress towards English language proficiency, graduation rate, your dropout rate, um, your retention, your retention of teachers of color, things like that. So we don't have all of that data right now because the school year is not over, but once we get them, we'll be able to report out. So this is, this, this is it. Really, um, if, if, if you have any questions, uh...
Mr. Soto? Mr. Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, uh, Lieutenant Soto. So I want to say, and I know I, I feel like I'm right, that I've, I've heard this not too long ago, last year probably. Just went over this before, am I right?
This is an updated presentation from the one that we went to, uh, city council with, where we shared our MCAS results. But the, the short answer to the question of like, show me a checklist that gets you out of receivership, is that there is none. Like, that, that, that'll always be the case. There's not a checklist.
It's being strategic, right? And it's, it's, it's the hard work that you have to put in. I get it. So my next question is, any of the councillors excluding President McGee, because I spoke with him earlier today, but the other two councillors, um, Jordan and Vacan, did anyone get an email or anything stating that they will, that will be present or not present? No one got an email? So here's how I feel. Cause when I file an order, it's an order that tells you the people of the city that I care, right? I care about what my order is doing for the community, especially when it comes to children. So if you don't have the common decency to be here at this meeting, that speaks volume. And I'm hoping that the constituents that vote these people in are listening. If you care about the education and the future of the students of this city, then you should be here. Thank you so much for all this extra effort you did. Thank you. I really appreciate you. Thank you. That's all I just wanted to say.
Yes, Mr. Willihan?
Thank you, Doctor, for the, for the presentation. Yeah, um, um, I'm not going to speak for the makers of the order, but just, um, when I'm talking to the public out there, that's sort of the frustration that I feel out there with the public, that there's no end game. You know, how do we got a receivership? When's it going to end? You know, we're, we're almost, you know, a decade into it. And so I think that's the frustration that I feel out there when I'm talking to people. And I don't have an answer for them when they're asking me, you know, what are the points? I don't know. You don't know. So that's, that's the main thing. I think, I just think the public has a frustration that there, there's no checklist. There's no end game. And then going forward, you got the state calling the shots, people that no one knows who they are. They don't know what they look like. There's a man behind the curtain. Okay? Okay. The public doesn't know who these people are and they're the ones calling the shots. So that's why, that's another issue of frustration. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
They've appointed me to do that, sir. And I feel like I've been inclusive and involving you in a lot of the decisions.
You still have the answer to these gray men. Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to answer. I'd like, um, so just a talking point, if I were in your shoes, ask, like, this is how I address that question. I really, 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 and not one person has been able to clearly articulate with me. Not one person has been able to clearly articulate this to me. What is it that getting out of receivership is going to do for our kids in the classroom? Like, I really want to know. I'm interested to know what change do you want to see for our students in the classroom? And, and that's the information that I want because like, we don't need to wait for receivership to do good things for kids. This conversation about receivership ending, it, it, it seems primarily adult driven. Like, there's a lot of adults that have an issue with it and for their own reasons. I don't know. But like, my main concern is what's going to change for our students when, when receivership goes away? That's going to be good. And if, if you get asked that question, please, like, ask them, what do they want to see changed for our students? Other than the politics and the adult, like, like, not one person has been able to say, okay, when we get out of receivership, this is what's going to change. That's going to be better for kids. Um, because that is the, like, that's the root of what I'm trying to do to, to, to really, like, uh, you know, in our strategic plan, that's really trying to get at, like, how can we make things better for our students? Get better outcomes. Um, that's important to me. And, you know, it also, I also care deeply about what the community feels and, and thinks. So, um, but we, I, I try to focus on, on our students and what's best for them.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Uh, Mr. Rivera Cologne?
I just wanted to add to the conversation and to any of the constituents who might be listening too, that this is not a unique problem to Holyoke. That this is not a unique problem to Holyoke. The idea of creating receivership was made in a way that didn't really have assessments in place to be able to tell the communities, these are the things, the minimum things that you have to do in order to gain local control. This is not a Holyoke specific, this is for every district that is in receivership. And it's not a given path of what we're supposed to do to get out of it. That being said, just like Mr. Soto was saying, we're not not doing anything. Right, we are doing the best we can, and as the school committee, we are training, we are making sure we build the capacity that at the moment that that happens, we will be ready and able to be able to serve our constituents, to serve our kids, because that's what we're here for. And I understand the frustration and I understand that issue of control, right, who's actually calling the shots? Being able to have local control, you get to vote for people who get to represent you and actually have a way to be able to contribute, and it's not a one person appointed. It is a community, it is multiple perspectives into every decision that's made. That thankfully, we have a superintendent that would listen and actually gets into conversations and gets to the stakeholders. But that is because that is the character of Mr. Soto. In reality, there's no requirement for Mr. Soto to be able to listen to us, because at this point, we don't have local control. So it is part of it, because again, it's not a requirement, it is his choice to work with us. Because it's in the best interest of our students, it is the best interest of our community and our families. So I just want to make sure that for all the people who may feel uneasy about it, that is not a unique problem. It is not a Holyoke-based problem, but it is our community, it is our voices that are being heard, and we are working for our students. So I just wanted to make sure that that everybody knew that too.
So I would just like to point out that we have um three members of the city council that are on this board that want to speak and a member of the school committee. So I'd like to entertain a motion that we suspend the rules and allow those members one at a time to have the microphone as well. All those in favor? Any further discussion or any opposed? Okay, I'm gonna start with um, I smi- I'm gonna start with on Zoom, we have uh Counselor Puelo has his hand up. And then I'll take the people in person.
Wanna take the presentation down so they see him?
While we wait to figure out how to get uh the city counselor up on our Zoom to be seen by all. I'm going to invite Counselor Maldonado Velez to speak. Uh, yep, you can go see it next to Samantha, please. And just make sure your green light is on, make sure your mic is hot. Gentlemen, the floor is yours, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Joint Committee. Um, I just, something really brief, because I think um Mr. Soto, uh Superintendent Soto had a good question, so. Two years ago during the campaign, the question was asked, how do you feel about receivership? And my answer was straight up, like, is Holyoke ready to be out of receivership? Because that's a really legit question that we need to ask ourselves, um, because I think the we really don't know what it means to be under receivership and not under receivership, and I think Mr. Soto's question is like, what should happen inside the classroom that we can do now, regardless of whether the state's taking over, federal, whatever it is, like, what can we do at the uh and? So I just want to say, appreciate for the steps that you're taking to get all these numbers and making sure that we're doing, you know, going towards the right direction. You know, I do want to push, and I know the school committee is working hard on getting out of receivership, because at the end of the day, there um is is I'm also a a just a ne- a negative on Holyoke that our schools are under receivership, that's just the narrative around it. Um, but I think the the communication and and that I hope just the clarity um to the people of Holyoke. Like, what is the difference between being in receivership and not being in receivership, because I think that's really, that's not very clear. Um, because there are some things that we can do, I agree with you, like, what are we doing inside the classrooms, those things can still happen, so. That, I just wanted to make that point really, and I hope that like, sort of, as we're in this space, like, that clarity comes out so that we all know, because I'll be honest, I myself don't really know if we're under receivership or not under receivership. I feel like, you know, being a product of a whole public school systems, we've always been, uh, I don't know. Under the microscope by every freaking entity in Holyoke, outside of Holyoke, all that, so. For me, it's, I I think we just gotta be more clear to the people of Holyoke, like, hey, if we're out of receivership, this is what it means. Um, I think um the school committee member, Jada, that I read, I made a good point. Because we do appreciate as a receiver that you're here with us, but it doesn't seem like that's a requirement for a receiver to be here. So what does happen, though, if you were to leave or go to another position, so that that is scary um to think about, um, but we should, we should be setting ourselves, get a good foundation to get out of receivership and understand what it means to have local control of our school, so I really hope that at least that clarity comes out of the school committee body, um, and the receiver. But yeah, I I think we're taking the steps, steps in the right direction, I hope we'll get there soon enough, but yeah, those those are my two points.
Thank you, Counselor. I see we have Mr. Polo up now on Zoom, is that right, Sam? All right, uh, Counselor Polo, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to Samantha for the ad, I I was lost in the ether there for a little bit. So just a couple of quick points, and you know, I I respect the Ward Six Counselor very, very much, and and I sit next to him, I just want to say, I I to correct the record, I do think that Counselor Jordane and Counselor Bacon care very, very much about our schools, you know, I think that's an unfair point with all due respect to to the Ward Six Counselor, I I do think they care about the finances, they care about the schools, they care about the receivership situation. And I I think we've seen them do a lot of work to move those points forward in a positive direction, I think, and a lot of other people think. And, you know, just just to be fair, I I I think there was a little bit of confusion with the setup of this meeting, because I mean, me myself, I didn't even know that there there was gonna be a meeting tonight till I checked, I know there was a there was gonna be a meeting the day of the last snowstorm, and then it got rescheduled, so maybe there was some cute confusion with them on when the meeting was gonna take place, but uh just one quick point on on the receivership, Madam Chair, and I think it's really important to address, because there's a lot of people out there that communicate their unhappiness with it, and you know, with all due respect to a receiver. When when people see things like, you know, somebody that makes hundreds of thousands of dollars and comes out on top of the city's pay list, and they don't live in the area, they don't even live in the 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 time zone, to be quite honest with you, they they live like in Chicago. I think people get upset about things like that, and I think that that has to do with receivership, because we appoint people that would be in charge. The people have a direct say of who those people would be and how they run things, you know, make the the receiver wouldn't be a receiver, he'd be a superintendent, he'd live in the city. Uh, I think these are important things, I think that, you know, people have a valid point to to request respectfully uh the return of local control, but I I just wanted to make those points, and the most important one to make was, I I do think, and I appreciate them very much, that Counselor Bacon and Counselor Jordane care very, very much about the schools, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Polo. Uh, Rosalie left, and she used to speak next, uh, Counselor Rivera.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, so I guess I I I want to reiterate with Counselor Maldonado Velez, and uh, school committee, uh madam, right, I don't know what's what's terminology, remember, right, um. Do- there you go, doctor, uh, we'll do that one, doctor, we'll do that one, doctor, Dr. Rivera. I like that, I like the sound, anyways, so I kind of want to reiterate what they were saying with regards to uh appreciating the fact that the the receiver and the super slash superintendent, superintendent. Um, is working with us, right, working with the city, working with the school committee and allowing um collaboration overall. Um, and I agree with some of the points that he made with regards to what what is being done, what what can be done in without receivership, that's that's being, that's not being done in the classroom, right, um, now or currently, so. I guess that's a message to us as 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 residents in the city, right, like, what do we want and how do we want to go about doing it? All we have to do is work with the department, right, uh, work with the teachers, work with um the um administrators with hopefully attaining the small goals that we need to attain first. And overall, it will then spill into a larger goal, which is to to get out of receivership, right? For me, um, I think one of the main issues with the receivership title is what was mentioned by Counselor Maldonado Velez, it's it's sort of a stain for the city of Holyoke. Um, there are a lot of people that have taken their kids out of the school systems because of that, um. It's a pride thing for us, uh, today, earlier at the at the at the city hall, um dedication, somebody said that 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 Holyoke, I think it was uh the president of the chamber, I think it was Jordan. She mentioned that Holyoke, she didn't, she wasn't raised in Holyoke, but she lived here for like about nine years or so. Um, but what she's learned about the people from Holyoke is that they're very prideful, um, and the fact that we don't have control of our schools is hurts our pride, that that is the main thing for us, right? Um, it's true that it's mostly parents, the kids don't really understand that, but it's just a pride thing, and I know Soto knows that, because he's from Holyoke. So like, I I'm sure he totally understands it and gets it, um, so like, for me, that's the main piece. But then there's like a somewhat of an education piece with with the community and and having them understand what receivership really is and what where the powers lie. Because I only know this, because I'm taking master's classes, and I ended up taking a class on uh education policy, right? And then I learned that this is not unique, this is, this is an issue with the system, a larger issue that cannot be solved here on a lar- on this, on this small scale, right, it would have to be in larger offices in Boston somewhere else. If the people understood that, um, or or had a a an idea of where that comes from. Um, there would be more 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 understanding as to the gray people, right, because I do believe in gray people too. Uh, Soto is the leader, but there's still somewhat of a gray area, I I get that, but I understand it, though. And and when you understand it, makes it easier for you to sit with it for a while until until we get to the point that we need to be at, so we move up into that, that place of independence, I would say, but in the beginning, I went to the schools, and when they were talking about receivership, I have to say that, like, I was in agreement with receivership in the beginning because there were a lot of issues going on within the school systems, a lot of kids getting suspended, a lot of variety of things that had, gave us national attention. Uh, high pregnancy rates, like a variety of different things, dropout rates, and something had to be done, right? Now, ten, twelve years later, um we're working towards a better Holyoke, right, a better school system, um, and I appreciate that, um, but one day, we get our schools back, but it's just, we really need to have, right, we we really need to have our stuff together for when that happens. Because I know that the landscape will change once that happens, people will then become running for school committee, people will run for city council, they'll be all different. Different dynamics will be happening within the community, so for us as a system, we need to be ready for that. Um, because it's not just gonna be, oh, you got your school back, now it's gonna be a whole political conundrum, and thank you for the time again.
Sure, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I just, thank you, uh, Counselor Rivera, I just wanted to just communicate to the public, you do have really, really strong school committee members that care deeply about our students and care deeply about what's going on in Holyoke Public Schools, so, uh, you know, in terms of being ready. Um, I have a tremendous amount of of respect and admiration for for the people that do sit here. You know, whether it be bi-weekly or monthly, uh, really, really caring about what's going on, and and honestly, it's been a partnership with the school committee. They've committed to to growing and learning, and um, I can't think of one decision that I made that wasn't influenced by by our school committee, who cares deeply about about this community, like, we talk often about issues. And every every time they provide input, it it has a huge influence on the decisions that we make, so. Holyoke will be in good hands, we do return to local control for sure.
So I have lots to say on this matter, uh, as this one sitting school committee member who was on this body pre-receivership. Um, first off, I would just like to state that Massachusetts was the first state to have school committees. School committees are important, because just like how the city council governs the city, we govern the schools. So the problem with receivership is that the state decided that we didn't perform good enough to their standards. When all they did was restrict funding, restrict access, not provide the services that a public the the that a public district like Holyoke with a severe number of students as English language learners. With a severe number of students living below the poverty level, severe number of students with special needs, they were not supporting us in the way that they needed to. They accelerated receivership because things weren't going the way that they wanted them to go towards the end. So let's not forget that, receivership is government control over a local district. Holyoke is especially luckily that we currently have Mr. Soto as our acting receiver. Let's not forget, he is not technically the superintendent, though I would be more than thrilled if he was. We got very lucky under Dr. Zrake as well, that he was willing to have the school committee still at least have a voice. Lawrence, their receiver didn't even allow the school committee to meet. We have no legal voting rights under receivership. We are the elected people who are supposed to have say over the budget, over curriculum, over union negotiations and contracts, over so much that the average person does not realize. Because they don't bother to look up the laws and the rules. We need local control so that the people who govern this city have direct communication, and we do, and we're lucky in that. But it doesn't, it it could very easily not be that way. Lawrence does not have that privilege, their school committee had to fight to even be allowed to attend meetings. We might not have voting rights, but at least we have an ear, we have some say. The comment about the the employee for Holyoke Public Schools who doesn't live in the area. I have not witnessed a more dedicated staff member than that member of our staff in the ten years, nine years now that I've been a part of this Holyoke Public Schools community. So I don't care if she lives in Chicago, California, or Singapore. The the work and the dedication she puts into this district is unmatched, so I don't want to hear anything about that, because under local control, the school committee elect interviews and hires the superintendent. Beyond that, we're not in control over staff decisions, the superintendent can appoint everybody else within that, we don't have say over who the janitor is, who the teacher is, who the assistant superintendent is. Who the director of finances, so whether we're under receivership or local control, it could be the same position. Now, maybe the title of the position would be different, because they wouldn't be in charge of, you know, regaining local control or whatever, whatever exactly the title is. But Mr. Soto did not have the privilege of working in Holyoke when we had a full governing uh, school committee, so he doesn't understand the difference. So, yes, the day-to-day classroom probably wouldn't change, and that's what gets me about receivership. People like to talk about it just because it's a hot-button topic, it gets brought up every election cycle, like, I'm running for city council to help get the school out of receivership, but I don't see any city council members at our meetings on a monthly basis. I don't see any city council members, besides the one that's appointed to the school building committee, involved in the school building committee process. So I appreciate those that do get involved and those that come to extra meetings, but you know, like, like my compadre next to me was saying, like, this presentation has been gone over. We've gone over the facts that we don't have an exact checklist, you know, people don't understand that. We are being, we're going through extra training right now with the MASC, we have um Glenn coming out monthly to make sure that the school committee is getting all of our training back up to date, we've reestablished numerous um, of our subcommittees, which luckily, we've been allowed to do. We've been in meetings privately with the commissioner that people don't even realize, to be building the bridges to regain local control. So all of these questions could be answered with a simple phone call, with a simple coffee meeting, with simply getting involved more as the district's day-to-day runnings, so. Anybody who wants any further discussion about receivership, we're happy to have it on any given day, on any conversation, but regardless of how it affects the classroom right now, today, the district must eventually come out of receivership. It is not okay for a state entity to be able to take over a locally governed body. Just like the city wouldn't want to see it take over the city council, so. It must happen, we must work towards it, we are working towards it. And that's that's just all I have to say about that, and I think we're gonna move on to our next agenda item.
Counselor Anderson Burgos. I will be quick, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'll be quick, so. As you already know, this is a very sensitive topic to a lot of Holyoker. Including myself. So I wanna state for the record, Counselor Vacan and Counselor Jordane. Never told me that they didn't care. But because it's so a sensitive topic. And if you're going to have these discussions and file these orders that you so passionately care about. It comes off to me, I'm not saying for everyone, but it comes off to me. That you you don't care. Is that fact? No, it's simply my point of view, how I see it. Now. I just wanna state for the record, I always prefer. The superintendent Soto as superintendent. Because as my colleague mentioned, he doesn't need to be here. He chooses to be here. He is a leader. So he gets that title from me. He's a superintendent with a heart of gold. And the heart of Holyoke in his hand and in everything that he does. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Alright, moving on, we have uh item number three. We have an order filed by Counselor Puelo. That the receiver of schools please explore the cost and feasibility of revamping current driver's ed classes. So that upon completion, students receive a driver's license slash permit from the DMV. Do we offer drivers in in school?
So we don't have a driver's ed program. Um it's not part of any of our curriculum anywhere. Um what I will say though is, um we do have an amazing school resource officer. Uh Juan. Um who actually graduate, he didn't graduate with me, he graduated a year after me. I used to pick on him on the basketball court. But um he's he's just such a good guy that uh, you know, he started a a an after-school program. With our students because that he's truly uh, you know, sitting there policing, he's actually building relationships. And he identified a few students that would be interested in in learning how to like pass their learner's permit. So uh he's been doing it for about two years. It's a permit prep program. Um it doesn't cost anything to the city because it he's just making it a part, he's volunteering his time after school. To help some kids learn how to pass their learner's permit. Um in in terms of exploring what it would cost, I would I would imagine it would cost. Uh you know, there would a significant amount of insurance that you would have to purchase. There would be a vehicle that you would have to purchase, um unless you partner with. Uh uh an existing school or something like that. Um and you would have to hire a a driver's ed instructor. Um but you know, that's not something that that currently in the. In the school district, we're not, you know, we're not prepping kids for. Driver's ed or teaching them how to drive. We just have an SRO, thought it would be a good idea to volunteer his time. And and to teach kids how to pass their learner's permit. Um they go through uh six sessions. Um and you know, he he meets with them on uh Tuesdays from. Two thirty to three thirty, uh one day a week. Um and he, you know, he's just, he's doing an amazing job, but right now. It's not part of our curriculum and we don't have any plans right now to to create a driver's ed program. Um and uh as part of the normal school day.
Um Sam, is Counselor Puelo still on Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh so again, to allow the counselor to speak on his order, thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Counselor, uh sorry, I combined your names. Counselor Puelo, you have the floor.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for the for the to the receiver for this presentation. I didn't know this was a thing. I I got this request from. Uh a family down here, I think on Vernon, uh I'm looking at my notes, so I'll get this information over to them. I I I do wish, and and as we heard some previous speakers say, I mean, we we, you know, it's not required, but I I wish maybe if we could explore. You know, maybe looking into doing it during school hours. Um I mean, I'm sure the family will be interested and and excited to see that this is an option after school, but. Uh you know, if maybe that that was something that we can do in the future, I'm sure that we could, we could figure out a funding source or something. I so I did this down when I was in Florida. I finished high school in Florida and it was a great program. The class was always full. Uh it was just fantastic for students, so when the family recommended it to me, I said, oh yeah, I like, this is awesome. So I I just wish we could explore that a little bit more, but thanks for the presentation. I'll get this information over to them.
Thanks, Counselor Puelo. Are we all set? Any co- come, have a little remarks? Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually like this order. Um. Yeah, I I didn't get, for for those of you that don't know, I I was twenty-four when I got my license. Isn't that crazy? Twenty-four years old, putting that in the public record, so this is actually a great order. It really is. I would like to like. Thank you.
Take city money, Counselor. Alright, so no action to be taken on this order either, correct?
Unless Counselor um Puelo has.
Yeah, I I guess it's been complied with, uh.
Alright.
Uh man, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving along. We have item number four, counselor filed by, I'm sorry, order filed by Counselor Maldonado Velez. To receive information on Hoyok Public Schools anti-racism and diversity training already in place for employees and discuss how it can be improved. We actually have a subcommittee for that, too.
And the rules will allow Counselor Puelo to, I mean, sorry, Counselor Al uh Maldonado Velez to.
Still moved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an order I filed, I think, so item six is sort of similar to, well, it's not the same thing actually. But it's an incident around which led to this order around like what is the anti-racism training happening in our city? I know I filed a similar order to Kelly from Personnel. Um she followed up with a a letter and I know there's other trainings that are happening as well. Um at the city level, so I'm really interested to see what's happening um at the on the school side of things, so that's really what the order is for.
Uh Mr. Soto, you have the floor.
Thank you for for the order because uh I love this topic and I love people interested in in. Um in learning it, so next slide is. Sam, uh uh was that you or was that me? Alright. So uh I wanna say a few years ago, you know, when. When the incident with George Floyd happened, um Dr. Zrake was superintendent at the time. And, you know, he he put out a bold statement. Um that said that Holyoke strives to be an anti-racist district. And that we're we're making that commitment. Um and I, you know, when I took over, I gladly embraced that. And there's no roadmap to becoming anti-racist, but I know a huge component of it was. What are the commitments that we're gonna make to live out, uh uh to ensure that we're moving on a path through through equity? And anti-racism and building that, a culture that that embraces that. And you know, we uh through through my strategic planning process, we did. Uh set those equity commitments, one being that we intentionally build a community that's anti-racist, inclusive and culturally responsive. We ensure that the students, families and staff get the support they need to be successful. We seek out and incorporate the voices of those impacted with a commitment to include those who have been excluded in the past. We promote access and inclusion for all students, staff and families. Respect, embrace and honor the diversity of our students, families, staff and community. We reflect on our own behavior, ha- behavior to minimize harm to others. And we create a culture of acceptance and empathy so that everyone feels valued and is able to contribute. To our community's success. Those are commitments that drive everything we do. And I wanna, I wanna just like reiterate that when we talk about equity and anti-racism. It's not this thing that is to the left, this this checklist that you do. Equity and anti-racism is how we do everything that we do every day, and it's a mindset. You know, it's how you develop your budget, it's how you go about making your decisions, who's at the table making those decisions. Uh as a principal, how you develop, you know, how you uh make some certain staffing decisions and how you develop the culture in your school. Like, everything that we do, equity has to be embedded every single day in in this work. It's not separate. It's aligned to everything that we're doing. Um I wanted to just, I thought it'd be good to just briefly update, you know, some things that we're doing. Cuz training is a component of that, but it's not, can't just do training and say, oh, we're, you know, we've achieved that, but the equity, we're good. Uh one thing that I've learned over the last three years is that. Um we did a lot of training over the last three or four years with our our cabinet and our principals. Our leadership received a lot of training, and when I took over that, to me. What it had done for me as a leader, it it cha- it opened up my eyes to a lot of things. I started to reflect. On myself, my own biases, I started to even question like, why do I think? The way about certain things, you know, um it 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 just was so powerful to to just change who I am as a person. It's made me more empathetic, it's made me more question my own thinking and and. And, you know, really embrace the the thoughts of others, even when I feel like my mind is made up or what what I think is the right way. Uh it really, 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 really pushed that thinking. With that said, I thought it was important that. It reached beyond the principal. What I wasn't seeing is it getting beyond the school leaders. So we made a commitment this year that all of our staff are gonna get some training. Every single one of our staff, we even opened it up to to school committee members, to we we partnered with the Equity Imperative. And they've created a a series of modules that are two hours long. And it's not just that 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 can be done asynchronously, so you can do them at your own pace. But paired with that, we we equipped our principals cuz when you go through that type of training for the first time. It 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 leaves you think like with certain feelings, you start feeling a certain way and and. It leaves you with like wanting to talk to somebody about it. So in addition to having the modules, which we've done mo- one module this year, that we rolled it out to everybody, we rolled it out to. Um all staff, not just teachers. Um each principal created a space. Where they could debrief the learning, so a- after everybody's gone through the first module. Uh each principal held a session at at the schools and and was supported by uh one of our principals. Who's gonna be leading our equity and anti-racism work. Um they had a session where where uh Mr. Mogel showed them, this is how you debrief it. This is one way you could debrief it with your schools, and each principal did that. Um our plan is, so we did one one module for all staff. And uh next year, we're gonna go to through two modules and then one more the following year. Uh we're doing a lot, so like, you know, we have Hill for Literacy, our early literacy professional development. We, you know, we're doing a lot a- around a get better faster model, so there's a lot of professional development initiatives. The challenge that we have is like fitting everything in because everything's important and this is important. So next year, we're, you know, I'm happy that we're gonna be able to roll that out even deeper with uh going to deeper learning with all staff. Um cuz they have interactions with kids every day too, our custodians, our paraprofessionals, anybody that has interactions. There's, it it's powerful to learn about, you know, how your actions can be perceived and what you, you know, what you've been trained to think. The other thing that we do is we provide professional development for, there's been eleven sessions to date uh for all of our principals, so. Uh we s- we have professional development on every other Friday at the library or or depending on on where there's space. Um in a good sixty minutes, sixty to ninety minutes is spent uh um providing our principals with professional development around. Um anti-racism and equity with the with the idea that they go back to their schools and turnkey it, so. Uh Mr. Mogel has done a really good job in in designing those professional development sessions. And giving materials to the principals so that they can go back to their schools and share it with their leadership teams and with their staff. Uh during one of their professional development uh sessions. Our goal next year is to have ten of those sessions. Like, the difference between this year and next year is that we're gonna be monitoring with uh making sure that principals are actually doing. Those ten sessions and we're we're gonna have Mr. Mogel, who currently is the principal at um at Morgan, he's gonna be. There supporting every principal with with uh with with being able to implement those turnkey sessions um at their schools. And some of the topics that were covered on that first module was implicit bias. Uh that we looked at data, it looked at data uh by demographics. Uh in our district, it it looked at race as a social construct, you know, race is something that was created. It was created, um and there's a lot of deep learning that and and conversation. Not many people know that. They think race is a part of who you are, it's not, it's created as a social construct. Um and then there's a case study of of being Puerto Rican in Holyoke that that was covered um at one of our principal sessions as well. So. Uh you know, intersectionality, understanding multiculturalism, these are just some of the topics that were covered at the principal sessions. Um and this is the modules that I talked about. We partnered with Equity Imperative to to create these asynchronous modules for us. Um so far, we've we've done one and um the issue that I have, I'll I'll be. Perf- like, I'll definitely be clear, one of the issues that I have right now that we're trying to solve is that the Equity Imperative doesn't have. Um didn't create this content in Spanish and there, we're not allowed to take. The this thi- these materials and and dub it ourselves, and I'm not happy about that, so we're working with them to create. Um create an opportunity because we do have, you know, staff members that that are in uh Spanish dominant speakers. So we're, we need to create that same opportunity for those staff members, whether they're cafeteria workers or whether they're. You know, uh dual-language teachers that, you know, that that teach in Spanish predominantly. Um like, you have to provide that and that's, no, I I would say that that was a misstep in in demanding that up upfront. You know, we real, we thought we would be able to easily just take it and dub over it, but. Um that's not possible, so we're working with the Equity Imperative, like, how do how do we do that? Because that's important to us. So i- it might mean um that uh, you know, Matt Rodriguez. Who's who's the leader of the Equity Imperative, we create a session for Spanish speakers only. Um and he comes out and in person and does that, uh it's not the same. We'll cover the same topic, it's not the same delivery as the module itself, but we're in conversations with him for like next year, like. This is kind of a deal breaker for us. We ne- we need this in Spanish, so how could we make it happen? Um I ju- I already talked about like the, oh, I didn't talk about this. Also established an Equity Task Force, uh we have paraprofessional teacher, we have a student on there. Um uh, you know, several people on there and a counselor. Um and the idea of the Equity Task Force is to just be uh serve as. Uh a body to help move this work forward. And to uh one of the things that they're looking into right now is what are some systems and structures in place that? That we can recommend to uh the superintendent to to look into and to help, you know, dismantle. So one of the things they're looking into right now is our student handbook, so they're gonna be looking at the student handbook and. Um you know, depending on what school you go to, you could be a a student at Morgan, student at Ian White. You look at the student handbooks that get sent home, they kinda get at the same thing, but the tone is like completely different. Um so the Equity Task Force is that that we put together is gonna take a look at. Like exemplary uh models of a student handbook through an equity lens. And provide that to principals to say like, here's a template that you can look at, you know, in one, in one. That you can look at, you know, in one, in one tone, it it feels like threatening and like less welcoming. And then in the other one, it's like more welcoming and loving and empathetic. Um, they're getting at the same thing, but it just tell one of them was was developed. By a leader that had equity in mind and the other one probably just. Little different, so um, that's some of the work that they're doing, but you know, I I plan on having this task force in place. Uh, you know, uh continue to having this task force in in place. And one of the things that they do is identify things they wanna look, they want us to look into. Uh, right now, it's the handbooks, so. Um, and they also were a part of the uh creating the content that is in the the Equity Imperative modules that were created, so. They were able to get a pre-screening before everybody else got them, be able to give some feedback on on it before we rolled it out. And that's it.
Anybody have, yeah, uh, oh my god, this counselor committee member is always getting me every time, committee member Rivera Cologne.
Um, I, speaking about equity and looking at things through an equity lens. What was the process of selecting the Equity Imperative past your institution to go and learn more about this?
My pro- I, my process was word of mouth, I heard from other superintendents about this powerful man by the name of Matthew Rodriguez, who's a Puerto Rican from Chicago. And is just like an amazing person. And he's doing great work, he started in Lynn, um, where uh now commish- uh. Not Commissioner Riley, he's the Secretary of Education, Patrick Tuttweiler. He was the superintendent at the time in Lynn. He's now the s- the Secretary of Ed- Education in Massachusetts. He went during the pandemic, he worked with Matt Rodriguez to develop like online uh ac- uh. Professional development around this. He told me, Anthony, this is a game changer, like this is good. Uh, you know, another, another superintendent had also reached out as I was like exploring it. So I met the guy and and I just, you know, he he's amazing person. And um, you know, did great work, I, and that's, that's why we chose him.
In other words, there was an inequitable process to select.
Uh, define inequitable process, like, what would have been an equitable process?
Like actually thinking about what were the needs that you were looking for. Asking, uh, making a call so that different organizations were able to submit. Having a core of stakeholders who would have actually looked through the different proposals and seeing. The, the different offerings that were out there, seeing what would match our community, things like that. And not necessarily that they had to be like. Um, organizations or have credentials or something like that, but that they actually had.
Yeah.
What was there to be offered.
Yeah, it was, this, in my opinion, is a proprietary prod- product. This is what I was looking for, I, um, it was very specific, I saw it. Um, it wasn't something that's offered by um other organizations that I'm aware of. I guess what you're describing is like a competitive bid process, we did not go through a competitive bid process. Um, and the way thirty B is written is for professional development. You don't necessarily have to, because you're looking for professional development around a specific thing. Um, this was something that I saw, I saw it in action, I and I thought would be great, um, but. I don't know if if, like, what you're describing is a competitive bid process. We're getting exactly what we wanted out of, out of this professional learning. Um, someone that can create asynchronous modules that can be paced within our professional development cycle. That could be done asynchronously like by people online. Um, I wasn't aware of another, of a- of another vendor that that offered that.
The, the reason why I say that, when you have a group of people looking at this and thinking about the different perspectives, I think. That more likely than not, you would have caught the issue that it wasn't in Spanish much faster.
Yeah, right.
Before actually contracting someone to do the work.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the, the, the danger about. One person having a decision. And then being able to see like, hey, this is the person I want and then being able to do it.
Yeah.
Just in general.
Yeah, and I'll say, we do that, a lot of the professional development that we have and offer. Those uh proprietary products, right, like, you have a certain curriculum, can't shop out. Other professional development, like. People that wrote that curriculum are the one that provide the professional development. So I hear you and um I I'll definitely reflect on your comments for sure.
Um, one second, ca- uh, the coun- anyone else? Hmm, Council Madalena Villas, did you have anything to add?
Sure, I I actually wanna thank you, Dr. Rivera Cologne for um bringing that up, um, I think one of the things, so it is. The work comes to me is frustrating, uh, cause uh and and a a. Organization that is named Equity Imperative and not having like that Spanish translation, it's. It's not meeting its own, almost not meeting its own mission in a way. Um, so, you know, but I think, you know, I I this pandemic started summer twenty twenty. There were a lot of organizations, I would, you know, we live in a capitalist society, they saw a lot of opportunity, wait, this is a money opportunity, give some sort of trainings. Um, around determine equity, around white fragility, around anti racism, so I know a lot of that was happening, I don't, um. And I don't know about, I don't know personally Matthew Rodriguez, I don't know Equity Imperative like that, um, I'm sure they offer great, um. As you were explaining the first module, it was like, yep, that's what happens in a lot of anti racism trainings, you should really start to question. Your position- positionality in the world and society and like, what is white, what is black, what is race, what is ethnicity, so like. Understand it's there, but I do think we can do, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, at least an organization that can at least either. Maybe there can translate it now, but at least eh eh uh one that can communicate to all members of our of our community.
Yeah.
Um, I I think what you said is very important, like not just having the leadership team having this anti racism, um. It go- it should go to all levels, even down to the, um, you mentioned the janitors, cause we all have contact with the students. And I think we gotta make sure that every person that is in contact with the students are having that anti racism less lens and that approach. Um, one thing, uh, you know, another part of the reason why I brought, um, I actually put in this order. Um, it was about two years ago, I believe, two, three years ago, I was invited in for uh ethnic studies, um, class. And this was a freshman class and they were learning things that I learned when I was in college. I was a sociology major and I remember when I was in college, I was like. Wow, like the, there's terms to the things that are, that happened to me growing up and there's actual like studies around these things and all these. And all that stuff, and these were lessons that our students were getting, um. Uh, a- as freshmen in high school, you know, we're going right into high school, which is such an in the important point, um, in our. Humans development, um, so I guess my hope too is that we just don't stop there, I know the. The order itself doesn't ask about what sort of anti racism education we're giving our students, um, so I don't, we don't have to get deep into that conversation. Um, but I do just wanna put it in there that, you know, it should also include the students, cause they are gonna be our future and how do we make sure that they, we're, um. You know, educating and and raising anti racist, uh, or race, anti racist community. Um, it's not enough to say I'm not racist or that's not racist, it's actively going against those racist systems. Um, you did mention, next year, definitely tracking the sessions, I guess one of my questions was gonna be around. Is it required, how do we make sure that all the staff that is taking it is actually taking it, and I think you're. You're gonna approach that next year, like making sure that everyone is getting the training that they need, um, so. I'm just, I guess, looking forward, I know this is gonna be a lifelong thing for the rest of my life, anti racism is gonna be a topic that we're gonna.
Ever ending.
Keep going, it's never gonna end, um, but I do think as this, as Holyoke, um, we do have a very important role to play in this and in this whole thing, so.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Committee Member Irene Feluciano Sims chairs our Equity and Inclusion, I think, is the title, uh, subcommittee, so if you'd like to connect with her too. Um, and work on what the sub- subcommittee is working on. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow Council Rivera to make comments.
Second, or.
Entertain a motion, you're moving, I need a second.
Steps in.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, Mr. Israel Rivera, you're welcome to the microphone.
So, I I just wanted to make one point, everything sounds awesome with the whole race, equity, uh, anti racism. Um, I think the one thing for me with the equity piece is that nothing on the slides were mentioning, mention anything about special education. Regards to equity and 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 training teachers and. The staff around special education and dealing with students that have issues around special education. And their implicit biases around the parents with the kids that have special education. Um, because there, there's a whole nother aspect of that that is kind of missed. Um, not just here, across every district, um, and that's something. Later on, I'll ask, what is the 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 demographic of kids that are on I E Ps within our district, right? And I'm pretty sure it's a larger number.
Thirty-nine percent.
How much?
Thirty-nine percent.
Thirty-nine percent, so for me, it's this, that piece should be like in the equity piece. And Mr. Rodriguez should kind of get that piece down if he can too. Because that's, I didn't see that anywhere with regards to equity, because they they're a large percentage of our student body, that's the only thing.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Rivera, I s- I would, I would argue that like all of our equity commitments, um, include. They don't specifically name special education in there. And 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 I would also argue that, or not argue, I don't, I'm not arguing with you. But I will reiterate that this isn't. Separate work, everything we do is centered around our equity commitments. And in fact, if you look at the strategic plan and what our, what our main focus area is for next year. Is making sure that English language learners and uh students on I E Ps. Are are getting what they need in the classroom and the, um, moving towards an inclusive model. Like, like, that's equity work, it doesn't say racism and anti racism, it doesn't say equity, but. One of our entire priorities is geared around creating an inclusive culture for for students. That are, um, for all of our students, including our students that are English language learners. Uh, the, really, the the culture in Holyoke has been, you know, if if I'm a special educator, and and I, I can't speak for everybody, like. I feel like. It's really difficult to say, but I, generally speaking, the culture has been. You know, if a student is on on an I E P, like that's the special education teacher's role and oftentimes they're getting pulled. Uh, to provide services, um, and we wanna create more of a culture of of teams. So that grade level teams that include gen ed teachers, right, um, special education teachers and English language learner teachers. That are co-planning together, that are really looking at an entire grade or entire class and saying like, these are all of our students. How could we best support their needs? Whether they're on an I E P, not on an I E P, whether they're an English language learner. And and I, strong believer that if we do create that culture. Um, it's gonna be a game changer for all of our students. Um, we're, we're going through, uh, you know, Dr. Mahoney himself and few other leaders are going through. Uh, an inclusive schools leaders institute to learn more about how to co-teach and how to do inclusion better. Uh, many of our schools this year embraced that priority of of creating of of inclusive practices, but they did it without us giving them. A way to do it. Next year, we're gonna focus on learning about a way to do it and then giving it back to our schools. And um, all of our teachers are gonna get uh be trained on, there's gonna be six different modules that they go through. Around inclu- best uh inclusive practices and inclusion, because you look at historically our data. Our duly identified students that are on I E Ps and English language learners have been left behind. Um, so how could, you know, what the this, this model or this culture shift that we're making. Around uh becoming an inclusive uh school. Um, is 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 like really about like, how do we create those teams and better support our students that aren't getting the support that they need?
Thank you, and and to to, just to say, I don't, I don't doubt that. The equity that's within the training is touching on some of the points with the special education stuff. It's just to hear it voiced and to hear it said, you know what I mean, like, put out there, i- it makes it feel like it's intentional. And it makes it feel like it's a priority. And and again, not to say that it's not a priority, cause I believe it's wholeheartedly a priority, but at the end of the day, it just. You like to hear it mentioned, right, if if it's, it's just like, I I would like to be able to sit here the whole time instead of sitting in the chair over there, right? So you like to feel that, right, you like to feel that valued piece, so. At the end of the day, that's the only reason why I bring it up, cause I know that there are a lot of other parents that. They don't feel that the special education piece is being valued. And that's, that's the part where it is, it, but it's just, it has to be highlighted and put out more and and kinda wanna speak to that, thank you.
Well, Council Rivera, you're welcome to remain sitting there because next we're gonna take up the order that you filed. Um, so anything else, yes, uh, Council.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
So i- it's funny having this, or it's interesting having this conversation about anti racism, um, I, cause I think. Uh, as a Latino man growing up, you don't question, you just do what you're told and that's it, right? And I think that's been sort of my, um, uh, approach, I guess, in the council in this past year, I guess I'm just learning, whatever it is. But I do, I guess I should ask questions, like, what is gonna be, what are we doing with Equity Imperative? What is, what is the, what is the plan with them as far as like, are they providing a a Spanish translation, are they? Um, or are we looking at other organizations that may be doing this work, um, to, yeah, so.
I'll be honest with, so like, right, next year, we're actually dedicating a position to lead this work. Um, because of our rezoning efforts and the fact that we're closing schools, we were able to. Uh, repurpose one of our school leaders to help lead this work. And, you know, we are, we are going to be getting this translated, but this is our, our. You know, content for the next three years. It it it, it wasn't something they kind of did, they, they actually took. They worked with us to develop something that's custom to Holyoke, it includes like in a a video of me speaking, it includes. Different leaders speaking and then it goes into some of the, uh, some of the the stuff that I I I showed you in there. My, my, for, my immediate goal with the Equity Imperative is to make sure that we have the stuff translated. And to use, use it over the next, uh, it's a platform that. Staff are already um accustomed to and and it's got good content, like. It's not like they just did their thing, they worked with us and we said, no, we don't like that, we want this, we want, you know, it was customized to our needs. Um, but what I will say is like, in a perfect world, if I had my way. We would take what we learned from this consultant and we would, we would design our own. Um, that and and that would be my goal and we have somebody that's gonna be working full time supporting principals in this work. Um, next year and and he's aligned to that goal, he's like, you know what? We could create our own and 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 that, that's really where where we're at with it.
All right, any other comments, I think the, we can assume the order has been, um, fulfilled. Complied with. This is not council chambers. Thank you so much, all right, so moving along, item number five, we have an order filed by Counselor Israel Rivera. And invited the pre- representatives of Hoyol Public Schools Special Education Department to address the I E P process and procedures. As well as to discuss who they are working with to help ensure that families understand information being presented. Constituents are concerned that they might not be receiving adequate counsel when making important decisions in such meetings. Being that the consider, uh, that a considerable portion of parents identify as English as a second language. Is important that families understand the information that is being presented to them. Council Rivera, on the order, you have the floor.
Thank you. That's actually a nice picture there, was. Anyways, um, so, uh, thank you again, Madam Chair, uh, this order, I filed it, um. For a couple reasons, um, a couple families, a variety of families reached out to me with regards to uh special, the special education process, the I E P process. Um, and ultimately, I figured one of the things that benefits with the new style of the way we do uh public meetings is that they're. Now recorded due to Zoom, right? And because they're recorded, I feel like this is a good, a good place for for someone to present on how to, how how the processes go. And and what, who we are partnering with or whatever resources we have to make sure that families are.
or whatever resources we have to make sure that families are understanding the gravity of an I E P or the gravity of the situation that they're going to be maneuvering for the next years of their life. Um, so, um, it's a great place to be able to start this conversation. But ultimately too, at the same time, there, there are some other questions that come out of all of this. So, um, yeah, we're here. And I think one of the other things I would like to bring up for me is in my own experience, um, is like, one thing that came up while I was navigating the process is that like, because I had an, not me, but my daughter had an I E P, she couldn't start school at a certain time or a certain date because there was no actual slot for a student with an I E P. But in our reality, if I would have waived the I E P, she would have been able to have a slot within a school. So for me, it's like, that doesn't kind of make sense, right? When it comes to equity. So like, if I deny the I E P, my girl, my daughter would have been able to go to school. But if shit, if I don't deny the I E P, I have to wait till an I E P, I E P class opens up. So technically I was being denied a slot because my daughter has a disability. That's how it kind of felt in the moment. And, um, I just didn't understand how that was okay, kind of for me in the moment. So like, I, I want to, if I went through that, I'm sure there are a variety of parents that don't know how to navigate that situation. Fortunately, I'm able to call certain people and talk to certain people and be like, hey, listen, this is what it is. This is what's going on. But not everybody has that privilege. So for me, it's being able to have that presented here, um, uh, on a screen and having it recorded so that anyone can go back to YouTube and uh, type in this date and time, and they'll be able to go ahead and review the, the, um, what the processes are. And if they have any questions after that, they can reach out to, um, the schools.
So, so to the pre-K issue, I just want to, I don't want to confuse the public, like, in every single one of our integrated pre-K classrooms, there, there are half days, um, you know, uh, A M. and P M. session, there's fifteen slots, seven of which, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Mahoney. Seven of which are special education slots and eight of which are peer slots where you don't have to have an I E P um, to be in there. So, and, and, and we do struggle to fill those peer slots. So whether a, a student's on an I E P or not, um, there should be uh, avail, you know, available space. I don't know your, your particular situation, but we can certainly talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, uh, offline. I, I wanted to speak to the, the three ways that, uh, we get to an I E P, um, through, and they're through referrals. One of them is, uh, referrals from early intervention providers. So, um, you know, uh, if, if you have a pediatrician, for example, and, uh, the doctor says that your, your infant, that your, your, um, toddler requires speech services, there are early intervention services out there outside of the school department. Um, uh, pre-age three and a half that they can go to. And then when, um, if that, that agency, that early intervention agency uh, thinks that, uh, the student should be granted an I E P, they'll make a referral and, um, they'll attend a meeting with, uh, with, uh, members of the school district and talk about what services are needed. Um, and in that meeting, um, there, there'll be a, a, a team leader, uh, representatives from whatever, uh, early education. It could be V L C head start or whatever, or other agencies that are out there. They'll, they'll work together to, to, um, decide what testing is going to be required, whether it's speech, O T, um, academic, things like that. And then, um, once those tests are conducted, uh, another meeting is set up to review the results and to, uh, everybody in that room is there then decides, you know, based on the results of, of all of the evaluations and tests that took place, uh, you know, though either be eligible for an I E P or not. That was the first part.
Yeah. For this particular first part, just to speak to it, because I was in on, for me in my experience, right? That I went through that whole process and it's exactly like you said it, but I still didn't grasp what they were talking about. That's, so that's the piece to me, right? Like I, I'm about to get my master's degree. Like I could not grasp. My wife is an adjustment counselor. She has a master's degree in social, mental health counseling. It was difficult for us to grasp what was being said, why the decisions were made, what conclusions you got to it, how you got to it. That's the piece to me, right? Like, so like, that was difficult for me to grasp. And I had to like go over the paperwork, ask questions to other people, go reach out to a, a coworker that her husband is an autism specialist to, so that, that way I can understand what I'm reading, right?
Right.
Um, and that's, and I'm not saying that I'm smarter than anyone else or anything like that, but there's levels of parents of intel, uh, not intelligence, but like where we're at, right? Um, and not everyone's at the same levels. So I, I'm, I'm feeling like if, if I'm having a difficult time navigating this right here, this is just this beginning piece stage and that then like, what can we do better as a district? And I know that we are, our hands are tied. It's difficult. It's, it's, it's the new, the new, the new phrase is out there. It's complex, right? It's complex, right? But at the end of the day, what can we do as a district better? Or who can we partner with as a district to ensure that it's becoming, that, 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 like, parents are grasping the information, like, I, I don't know how many times parents have come to me and said like, yo, I go into these meetings and I just say, yeah. And, and I tell them, I get you because I go to city council sometimes and I just say, yeah. Cause like, it's just like the words are just moving and you're like, what's happening right now? So for me, it's like, that's one of the most important things that, one of the reasons why I filed it. Um, it's just going through that, that process. Who can we collaborate with to make sure that people are understanding when they leave the room? And they, they feel comfortable that they made a good decision leaving that room. Not that they were forced, and they're not forced, but they felt forced because they don't know any better at the moment. And it's like, well, you should know better because you have the degrees and you have the paperwork and I have to trust you in that moment. So that's one of the pieces I kind of want.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't really have a good answer for you. I, I will say that, um, there are many families out there that, that recognize the process is complex and that might need assistance. And sometimes they, they bring a special education advocate that is, that specializes in this. Um, to be slightly, and we would never done, like, they have every right to have an advocate with them. Um, that is very, very experienced with dealing with school district policies and the regulations. Um, so that's one way that a lot of families, they take advantage of having a, a special ed advocate present in the meeting. Because, uh, they, they, you know, they're experts and can help navigate that. And we also, in, in terms of the language barrier, which is a second part of that.
Yeah, that's the other piece too.
Every, every family member that enrolls in Holyoke Public Schools has the option. But like, when they do enroll in Holyoke Public Schools, they, they select whether they need interpretation, whether language is, is a, a barrier.
Um, and they're good with that because they asked me if, if language is a barrier. I, I, I think it's because my last name is Rivera, but it's okay. It's like, it's fine. Because if it was a barrier, I'd be like, oh, gracias. You know what I'm saying? Right off the rip.
But like, to, if that's the case, there's always an interpreter there to help interpret. And then once the I E P is written, it gets translated and back to the family. Uh, our goal is to have it back to the family within 10 days, uh, working on tightening up some of those processes.
That's just the other piece is the, is the, the, the dates, uh, the, the, the expansion of the dates. My daughter couldn't start school for like 60 days because of deadlines and deadlines and dates. So like it pushes back not only my edu, my daughter's education, right? But at the end of the day, it pushes back any, I have to, I have to figure out childcare. I have to figure out this, that, that. While I'm going to work and going to city council. But at the end of the day, so it's like trying to figure out and navigate all of that. Plus I'm dealing with the I E P process.
Um, I'll say special education is probably the area that we should, I mean, the school committee, it's a regular conversation. Like that's where we experienced the most staffing challenges this year. And that has had a direct impact on, you know, experiences in these meetings and services being followed through on. Um, is it okay if I move?
Nah, you can keep going. No.
Okay. The, the second way that, uh, students are referred is through our child, child study team. So every school has a, a child study team in place. Um, and the goal, the primary goal of that is if there are learning issues identified, um, this is the team that, that reviews that. So, um, you know, we want to make sure that any academic challenges that students are experiencing, that a team of people look at what supports might be in place for them to be able to access the curriculum. Um, but when they, you know, usually it's a, a, a teacher, an administrator, um, oftentimes a counselor. It depends on what the, what the learning challenge is for the student. It could be even around attendance. And in some cases, we'll have a family engagement coordinator at, and it, it really, really depends on, on the, the, the academic challenge that the, the student is presenting. So they would, uh, uh, tho- those teams would meet and try to figure out what, you know, what, what, uh, supports could be put in place. And, and, and after they're at it for a while, and let's say those supports aren't working, the child study team can then refer, uh, the student for special education services. And then it would go through the, you know, wh- what testing or what evaluations need to happen uh, before we set up a meeting and actually write an I E P and, or determine that that's the best course of action. And then the last one is around a parent, like a parent has every right to requ- request a referral. Um, and, you know, they would contact the evaluation team leader. And, and from there, we would just make sure to, to set up a meeting, um, work with the family member and, uh, other members of the, of the school, whether that be a, a, one of our psychologists, our counselors, our, our speech, uh, it depends, again, it depends on the, the need of the student. Um, they were, you know, that they would decide at that meeting what tests and evaluations would need to happen to be able to decide whether or not the student is eligible for special education services. Um, and then once, uh, once it's, uh, once that's decided, then a, a meeting is scheduled with the E T L and.
With regards to the E T L, are they trained in like B C B A services and stuff like that? Or are they, like, what are, what are their qual- qualifications? Um, they would be dealing with special education specifically, right?
Yeah, they're special education team leaders. So they, you know, they're heavily involved in, in coordinating these efforts and deciding, you know, what services, who needs to be in the room at these meetings for I E Ps, what the testing, what testing needs to be involved. And then, um, you know, making sure that the family is aware of what the process is for getting, uh, for getting an I E P. And, and just really, really navigating that entire process. Um,
So there, I guess, so for, for training wise, like for them.
Yeah.
What like backgrounds do we search for with regards to hiring or?
It's usually a special education teacher. Um, that, that's usually their, their background.
Okay. All right then.
Um, you know, I, I think, you know, you had asked around licensing and, uh, you know, one of the things that I pulled today, I believe like, uh, you know, a quarter, right now, a quarter of our special education teachers are on emergency licenses, um, which means they're, they're, you know, they don't have the D E S I certification right now to, uh, but you know, a good 70% of our teachers are, special education teachers are, do hold that license.
And, and one other, do we have, and because I know we have issues with hiring with regards to special education or counseling and, uh, mental health and all that. But I'm wondering because like, if the easiest way to be able to bring in staff is to work and collaborate with universities and colleges uh, with people that are graduating as they come out. But if we, do we have a system in place where we have a professional that could possibly help train or write off hours for someone that's coming out of college that would like to get their license, but they need to actually get their hours in at the same time to get licensed in the district, right? So like, if you're in the district and you come to work in the district as a counselor, but you don't have your hours in and there's no one to sign off, you're technically not ever going to get your license unless you leave the district and you go somewhere else for someone else to sign off on your hours so you could get your actual licensing. Um, so do we have that or are we working towards getting that? So that way it would help us.
I mean, we do have, I, I wouldn't say we have that for every single service or, or educational opportunity that's out there. I do know, I, like, students have reached out to me from colleges and said, hey, you know, I need 40 hours of experience. How can I get that? Um, and we've been able to make that happen, um, you know, and, and, and meet those needs. We don't have like a specific pipeline or program to do that. But, uh, most of it is, is them calling us and saying, hey, Mr. Soto, um, I am a student in, you know, uh, Springfield College and I'm studying to become a teacher. Uh, and part of it is I need to, I need to be in a classroom for X amount of hours. And we always work with them. So I, in that scenario, I reach out to all of our principals.
I guess I was referring to like the mental health aspect.
Mental health aspect.
And so that's a different type of, of hours and licensing process. Like it, it's not even D E S I. It's like a state licensure. You need to have a certain amount of hours us, under certain supervision with someone that is already licensed that can give you that. So it's like, if we had that, it seems like we kind of don't. So if we had that, then it would be easier for students that graduate come straight here and they wouldn't even have to worry about getting their hours.
Yeah.
So it's like creating an easier mechanism for recruitment for us by having that, that caveat, more or less. Cause coming to Holy Public Schools and being a, a mental health counselor or working here, it would be great for your resume. It would be a great resume builder, but it's not going to be good for you if you can't get your hours in so that you can get your licensure right out of, right out of college. So I guess that's one of the, the, the things I, I feel like would help us with recruiting for those positions for speech or, or, or O, O T A and stuff like that. But.
Yeah, um, you know, we, if I, is it okay if? Dr. Mahoney, Dr. Dr. Mahoney does oversee our S E L department as well. Um,
He used to be my boss.
And he used to be Izzy Rivera's boss. Careful with that chair. Tends to tip backwards.
Yeah, I, I would just add that just as we, uh, provide clinical, uh, supervision for student teachers, we also provide clinical supervision for folks in related, uh, situations. And, and it's, in- interestingly, in order to become an adjustment counselor, it's a very, it's a, it, it's more time to become an adjustment counselor than to become a school counselor. Um, we similarly, but we will also, um, as much as we possibly can, we'll try to partner and, and bring in speech therapists or occupational therapists, folks in specialties. They will work with our staff and a thousand percent we do that because we have a vested interest in having, making sure they have a really great experience and then we bring them on in. So just today, in, in walking in, 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 uh, uh, five different schools, we saw someone who was training with one of our nurses. We saw someone who was training with a special educator. We saw someone who was special, uh, who was training with the first grade teacher. We saw someone who was training, uh, in, uh, sophomore math. So, um, and that, that was across five different schools. Um, generally speaking, our staff will receive some kind of, um, uh, uh, education credit. So that if, if I, if I'm bringing, you know, uh, mentoring you and, and I can take a class at Westfield State or at Springfield College or A I C or something, something.
Thank you for that.
Um, no, the only other thing was around language access and the slide's not up there, but uh, part of your order was around, you know, Spanish dominant speakers. So I did want to report that um, all families do complete a language acts, uh, language survey every single year. Um, upon enrollment and, uh, yearly at the beginning of the school year. So we identify those families that, um, that require interpretation services. And this is one area that, you know, I feel like we're doing it better than anybody in the state. Um, it, it, it is newer, I, I wouldn't even say it's a newer initiative, but we were under a microscope through this pledge agreement around language access. And Dr. Zright did a really good job starting a program. But like the, the people that monitor that agreement and make sure we're providing language access to our families. Um, we meet with them every other, it's a, a group of attorneys from Boston. Um, and they review data on how well we're doing with providing, um, language access services to our families. Um, so this is something that absolutely like, um, if a family needs interpretation services, they get it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that piece, I experienced that.
Okay.
Very well.
And then, um, we also, one of the metrics. And then um we also one of the metrics they also do is um uh Sam if you get flipped to the next slide thank you. Um one of the things they also do is uh there we're required to send out a survey to our families. And ask our families how we're doing instead. How we're doing relative to language access and um and you know we we've looked at that data we've gotten a lot of good participation. And families this year in particular have rated us pretty high and like. If I need it in Spanish I'm getting it in Spanish um so. It it we're working with a lot of partners to make that happen because we don't have a huge language access department. Uh we started a few years ago with uh one translator interpreter. And we're up to three translator interpreters but even with three translator interpreters. It's not enough to meet the demand in. Um so you know to do translations of I E P like we're it's gonna cost us a a lot of money this year to catch up. So I'm focusing on like how could we make this sustainable um and meet the needs of our community. With the resources that we have we're lucky that we have S R money right now so we've been able to do that. Worried when S R goes away that we have know like we have to build a system to be able to keep up with it. Um and it it might involve like it might involve having like tele. Interpreters and 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 translators like we I can have an uh uh you know. Posting for a translator interpreter we're not it's hard to fill those positions. Like one of the one of the things that I'm thinking about is opening that up because a lot of this translation work could be done remotely. And instead of paying a vendor to to do it for you know. Five hundred thousand dollars a year like if we could just get a few more interpreters do like on our staff that are doing it remotely. Um I know you know counselor just spoke about not living here. The needs of our. And like finding interpreters locally is not it. Like so we need to be creative and think about how could we meet the needs of our students and families.
At my job I had to launch a program and I didn't have any facilitators yet we use facilitators from Boston.
Yeah.
I I I what am I supposed to do not run a program? I'm sorry that's just.
Services to our families like.
Like I can't do that yeah I agree with you.
And that's that's it I don't know if that addressed some of your questions if you had further questions Izzy I'd be happy to sit down with you.
It addresses most of the questions I had around the process and all the other stuff yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or anything? I would just like to point on record as well um Council Rivera that Massachusetts does have advocacy rights so people can go on D E S I's website. And look for Massachusetts advocates for children uh to help advocate if you're feeling like the district any district is not fulfilling the. Re- requirements of the needs uh of the student but to your point in understanding you know part of like. You know how did we get into receivership and like how the how the money works? You know the average per pupil expenditure in the state of Massachusetts is seventeen thousand dollars per student. And when we have a a student body that's thirty nine percent special needs. And the average student with special needs costs more like thirty forty fifty thousand to educate. The state isn't giving us all of that extra money to educate those students. So part of the foundation budget review that passed a couple of years ago was to try to more equitably fund districts like us. Um but that's an important a super important part to note because it costs so much more to provide the services needed um. And it we're just not budgeted for it.
And then I I think to speak to that is uh I think maybe like a a a larger campaign with some of the professionals that know what they're. They they're talking about with regards to this and and educating the community overall of like. What what to look for right or what to pay attention to was I I I. I wanna say my daughter was an early intervention because my wife and I were prudent we were paying attention right and we called and we wanted it. So that's that's why it happened if we didn't do that we would have found out maybe when she was six or seven. That she's having issues right so that that would have been way too late so it's maybe doing a a local campaign around. Just educating people on what certain things are what resources are around but that could be something done by the city versus just the school department itself.
And in partnership with pediatricians offices and other child service uh agencies as well. It's important to know what services are out there and it's that's why it's also important that as a district we provide as much. Uh pre K is possible the sooner. The sooner we're getting in front of our students the sooner we're able to identify these needs. You know legally you don't have to send your student to school till they're seven kindergarten is not even technically a requirement. So we wanna certainly be getting in front of students as as young as possible.
Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah the the only other thing that I'll add is I know there's uh I'm I'm a part of the Mass Association of School Superintendents and. Work closely with M A S C. Um the the association has a board that is really pushing legislation around special education reform. And um I think one of the things that that they spoke about in in um in Boston. A couple of weeks ago they did a a speak out and they filed legislation around creating. I don't know if you're familiar with the Student Opportunity Act but but the how the Student Opportunity Act got passed. Um a group of people advocated to have this Foundation Budget Review Committee. Um right now the real hot topic not hot topic but. There's a lot of advocacy around creating something like the Foundation Budget Review Committee for special education in Massachusetts. Um so that a lot of smart people in Massachusetts a lot of lot of people that really know about this can help look at. Some of the regulations in place some of the funding issues in place some of the staffing shortage like. Come up with recommendations similar to that Foundation Budget Review Committee that led to S O A that can help. Communities like Holyoke and communities across the state that are struggling with uh meeting the needs of our our special education. A population so I'm really really excited to when you know. Foundation Budget Review Committee met for like two or three years before they pu- put something in front of legislation and then it took a few years to actually. Do something that led to millions and millions and millions of dollars coming to Holyoke for our students. Um I'm really keeping a close eye on what that you know what's gonna come out of that and it's uh it's it's important sure.
Mister Soto aren't we also responsible to provide special education uh services to students who uh may opt out of the district? But live in Holyoke like if they attend private schools in the city?
Um it it sometimes yeah it uh. In that scenario the state makes a determination on who's fiscal and who's programmatic um and there are students that um. Maybe in other communities that the you know that 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 community is responsible programmatically but we're responsible fiscally. And vice versa there's some students that we're educating that the sending community. Um is fiscal for so yeah that's that is something I mean and then there's students that we just can't you know I think the. A classic example that I use we don't have a a a program for deaf students right so. We partner with Willie Ross and um we have about a hundred and fifteen students that right now are in out of district placements. That we spend about eleven million dollars a year to educate it's a um and and just recently. The the state sets the rates for those schools and they increase the rates on average of fourteen percent which is a huge hit for us because. For the same amount of students we're we're gonna be spending what instead of ten million we're gonna be spending fourteen million. Um and that that that's where do you think that's coming from it's coming from other resources in the district and it. Uh while I'm all for it that's something that this committee needs to look at like how do you address that? Cause that's not you know we're lucky we have S R right now and even student opportunities some communities that didn't get that are like up in arms like. Whoa 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 what's going on how do we solve this problem and work together um?
Right and where is the state to supplement the funding that a district like us with so many students needing out of district services suffer with? Right these are all the the funding problems that led us into where we are. But to that point too you know with all due respect to charter schools that's why. As a public school committee member I I advocate against charter schools because they're publicly funded but they're privately run. So if they if you have a student there that has needs an I E P or services that they're not willing to provide they'll just. Not let the student attend their school anymore and then as the public district we have no choice but to assume them back in. So that you know that needs to be looked at as well of what charter schools and private schools are required to provide to their students not just public schools. So alright moving on I assume you feel like your order has been complied with at this point in time wonderful thank you Council Rivera. Alright moving on uh item number six the last order on our agenda this evening we have order filed by Counselor Jose Maldonado Vales. Counselor Juan Anderson Burgos and Counselor Cocaine Given. That's a superintendent provide feedback and how the department is handling reports of teachers using derogatory words in front of students. Uh and refer that to our committee. If any of the counselors uh present would like to speak on the order?
I'm up here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow Counselor Given and Counselor Maldonado Vales to speak on their order. All those in favor any oppose? You have the floor.
Thank you Madam Chair um and thank you joint committee um so this order came from an incident that happened or a. Newspaper article that I read and then I followed up with um some of the individuals um but incident that happened a dean on April fifth and April fifteenth of last year. With two of the teachers using the N word in the classroom repeatedly not just once um mockingly and. Pretty much wanting to know like what what happens from the situation um I know as a Latino man growing up Holyoke these are not new things. Um I went through my own experiences growing up I was calling out microaggressions before microaggressions became a thing that people talked about. Uh but this for me was not a microaggression this was a straight up aggression a word that you know we know we should not be using um. Particularly in profession in school settings um and settings where that word is not allowed to be used um amongst peers amongst people. Um so I I guess so that's the reason for the order to see like what happens when these situations happen. Um and sort of like what um. Yeah what happens I'll leave it at that and I do have other questions based on the conversation but.
So like I haven't heard of a staff member repeatedly using that word. Um I will say that we did have an incident last year at a school. Where it was reported. That um that this had happened um what we would do in every scenario we would. Uh in in most cases we would put the the staff member on admin leave until until it's investigated. Um and we would conduct interviews with the teacher we would conduct interviews with the students in the room. We would and and we would document all of that and based on based on the investigation. You know we have every right to uh to take action whether that be to terminate or or to um. And in one scenario um I could just name like one scenario that I I remember vaguely. It was we had a teacher that um in an effort to teach a lesson around. Uh conduct at an interview uh you know definitely crossed the line. And you know was students were using that word frequently in the room. And in an effort to teach them about interviewing he said like. When a workshop around interview uh the interviewing skills and uh that that staff member said. No you can't go into an interview and talk the way you're talking you can't go into an interview. And like wear your pants below your 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 you know baseline and you can't talk like. Yo 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 and then he used he used a derogatory tame uh in an attempt to teach them a lesson of around proper interview etiquette. Definitely he or she definitely uh used that that word inappropriately and. Uh in that scenario had an opportunity to either call the person out and get rid of them or call them in. Um one of our equity commitments I think it was the second to last one is uh really I'm gonna. Read it for uh to reflect on our own behavior. To minimize harm to others and and based on that particular scenario I thought it was an opportunity to call this person in. And not call him out um so how I handled that situation because even even the students that reported it they had reported like you know what? We don't want this person to get in trouble but we want them to know how we feel and that that was wrong. So we set up a restorative circle with that particular individual where the students were involved. Where they were able to express themselves and why that language hurt you know was hurtful and they also provide you know they they also. Went through uh led by our ethnic studies uh teacher or staff members in the building. They were able to go through that restorative process and go into uh I think like a two or three hour workshop of uh learning so. You know in that scenario that was the course of action that I took I thought it was an opportunity you know like. We're we're committed to being an anti racist district and part of that is learning and learning how how some of our words may maybe hurtful to others. And the students thought that this was the appropriate action to really call them in and and talk about how they how they felt. Be able to express it and move forward whether they learned or didn't learn and then there's gonna be scenarios where like I do the invest we do the investigation. And I don't think that that's the pro- appropriate action we don't have a lot of precedence for it like I do have two scenarios within the same building. Um that you know that we handled that way it uh happened around the same time to be honest with you. Uh with two of our teachers but I don't have like other examples to use but I I can certainly say that there will be scenarios where. If something like this were done um and and based on our investigation I felt like I don't want this person in front of our kids. He's not he or she is not reflective of their actions and he or she doesn't stand by our commitments. And we have every right to terminate that employee you haven't had that situation yet we had a situation where I thought the right. Course of action was to call this person in and 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 do a restorative uh process with our students.
Thank you um Mister Soto um. Two things you said um calling people and I I think one thing um that we sort of shoot ourselves in the foot. When particularly doing this anti racist work is as soon as someone says something that um is not right. We automatically wanna shut them off so I do appreciate sort of that the calling in having that conversation with individuals um but I do think there. There are some boiling points there are some points where it's like no like this is not fair for our students. Um I'm a believer that you know I I believe we're talking about the same two incidents because they happened within the same month um. But I'm a believer that where there's smoke there's fire so like there may be other uh there may be other things that are happening in our spaces that you know maybe the students are not feeling. But like that they can come out and say it um not saying that we have this huge problem I'm not you know I don't wanna paint that picture as well but I you know. Wanna be honest with yes we had this two incidents and we had youth in there that were willing to step up parents that were involved as well that were really but. What happens when those situations will happen um when that does not happening um so I guess the question is like what is. One I guess what would be that point where it's like yeah this is not working for us at all um and then also like what is being communicated back to the students? You know how at the end of the day they are being victims in this thing in this sense so like how are we serving our population our students to make sure that. You know they feel like they're actually being protected they're actually being served in the school and that. This incident if the 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 adult is still present making sure that they feel like they they can trust this adult because that's how the student should be feeling.
Yeah that was part of the restorative process like uh everyone wanted to move forward in that way and I thought that I think that it did. I mean I I would say there there were scenarios where this word wasn't used but there was clear like. Clear actions and words that were used that were against our our core belief system and we have terminated employees not. Not for the use of this word but for or they're they're you know for the way they've. Other things that either were said or uh we we could just tell it's not a fit you're not a right fit for for. Or um you know for Holyoke Public Schools and we've made that decision um. The this just was a scenario where we thought this was the best course of action and and I I guess the best way to answer this is is like. There's not the the line that I draw in the sand or lack of a better term. Is when there's there's a a clear. There's clear racism involved and there's no self reflection and like there's just somebody that is in front of our students that's bad for kids. Like we can eas- we can pretty easily identify that early on after a hire and um. and, and act swiftly on that and have done that. You know, we've had teachers last four days, because, you know, we're trying to fill positions, and then we're like, whoa. You know, this person is not really aligned to, you know, the way they're talking about those kids. And when I was, you know, when I was in school, you know, kids act, didn't act like this, or, you know, like, like, there's definitely some people that you could tell are not good fits. And, and we, you know, we act on that pretty, pretty quickly.
I'll just follow up to that real quick. I, I do appreciate that because I think a lot of times, particularly, I mean, in any institution or organization, when you're well-staffed and you are just trying to make the day-to-day work, you let a lot of things slide. So I do appreciate hearing that, hey, there are some things that we don't. Like, it's just, we do actually take action. That's where I'm at for now.
Thank you. Anybody else have any? Yep, Ms. Counselor McGivern.
Yeah, McGivern.
Sorry.
That happens a lot, actually. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just, so, the incident that sparked that order was, seemed, it seemed pretty traumatic to me. We were actually on a, like a call, like a, with a, I think there were like eighty people on the call, and this one student was, was talking about her experience. And I was, I was shocked. I was, I was blown away. I'd never heard anything like this, you know, and she seemed really defeated by what happened, what she experienced, and our, our school systems' response to it. So I think it's really important to hear what is done normally. When you, when you talk about the restorative process, are students and teachers involved in that together and/or separately?
Together. It was, it was, it was together in this scenario. And in, in one of the scenarios, you know, it happened. The students in the classroom weren't actually the ones that reported it, but students started talking about it. And then a student that wasn't even there, you know, to, to really see it was, was one that really raised it and was expressing concerns around it. We, we investigated it, but yes, the, the students themselves that were impacted, and any student that felt like they wanted to be a part of the process, had the opportunity to do that. And I would say that both staff members were really, really reflective. They were, they were heartbroken and kind of let themselves down. Like, it, it was one of those things where that wasn't their intent to cause harm, but intent versus impact are two different things. And I think they learned a really valuable lesson. I think the, overall, the, every student that we interviewed, they loved both of those teachers. They were like, we don't want them to get in trouble, but like, you know, we want them to know, you know, that, that words matter and, and that, that's not something that you should say. And I, I think that, you know, everybody walked away from there feeling like there was some healing involved and some learning involved and some moving forward. It wasn't a repetitive incident. Now, if that, something like that were to happen with the same individual, it would definitely end differently, if they didn't learn anything or anything, something like that. And then, again, context matters. If, if, I'm not saying that any of this is acceptable, because one of the things that we did do was we communicated out that we stand by being an anti-racist and culturally responsive and inclusive community, and that, you know, in no way do we accept any type of language like that in our, our classrooms. And I don't think this was us accepting it. This was just us taking a look at like what the best approach is to handling that particular situation, because we, we don't accept that language. And there was consequences for, for the actions, which included some learning and some, and other things that I can't really talk about because their personnel matters. But there, there was accountability there. It just might not align to what others might feel would have been more accountable, like that person should have been fired. I don't, you know, that, that scenario itself, I thought, you know, personal opinion, that we handled it in a, in a productive way, where, where students were heard, staff were heard, and there was some learning and growing and moving forward.
The only other question I would have is, how do, how do things like this get reported? I feel like people act differently when, when, when someone's watching than when, when no one is. And I, I was also a child at some point, went to school and dealt with teachers who said things that they may, probably shouldn't have. I didn't always feel like I had a place to go to report that. And I can imagine just like with any kind of like, you know, power structure and abuse situations, that people don't always feel comfortable reporting something. So is, is there like an anonymous way to report things? Like, is there a Dropbox where I can, where a student can say, hey, this happened in my classroom? I don't really want, you know, the teacher to know that I reported this, or, you know, I mean, it's easier to say something, if you see something, if you feel like it's not gonna affect you, you know, personally. So I guess, yeah, I guess I just wonder how, how these things are reported, if, if there's an anonymous way to report them for the safety of all involved. I mean, I'm sure there's also, you know, teachers who may want to say something, but maybe they would if, if they didn't have to put themselves out there, you know? Just curious. Thanks.
Yeah. I think most students have a trusted adult within the building that they can go to. And I say, I wish there were more, right? Some, some students might not have a ton of trusted adults, but usually a student has a trusted adult. It, it could come in many forms. I don't, you know, I don't think that we have an anonymous Dropbox at every single school. But most of the times, they go to a trusted adult and, or, you know, there, there's times where, and I'm not just saying this particular incident, there's times where other staff members see something or hear something from, you know, a, a student coming in from another class, and, hey, miss, you, you're not gonna believe what happened. And that teacher ends up reporting it to the building administrator, who then reaches out to HR, places them on admin leave, and, and human resources helps conduct a formal investigation. And they don't come back to work until the conclusion of that. And depending on whether you're in a union or not at a union, we schedule an investigatory meeting where, where, where we lay out, usually the employee gets a letter, and it says, th, these are the things that we heard. We're gonna talk about them, and we're gonna provide evidence in this. You have every right to have your union representation there, and you have every right to bring your documentation and your facts so that we can review them. We have that investigatory meeting, and then based on the meeting, there, you know, there's follow-up on, on how, you know, what actions are gonna happen. But oftentimes, it's either from the students themselves, from the students' friends, from another staff member that reported something. It's not, there's check-ins with counselors, it, it varies. There's, there's multiple ways that either students or staff can report, you know, certain incidents that happen at schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I kind of want to follow up with Counselor Coco's, Counselor Given's sort of question, because one of my questions is like, what steps do students take anon, question mark, anonymous? Because I think, I, I know you mentioned, every student has a trusted adult. I think in a city like Holyoke, there's a lot of transient students, there's a lot of students facing a lot of different situations where that may not be the, the reality of some of our students. So, you know, I, I guess I would urge or ask that there is something that's created in a way so that not just students, I think of Counselor Given's point, also the staff, because they're seeing stuff, so that there's no sort of,
Fear of retaliation.
Of course, any of that, and we don't want that in our schools. But at the end of the day, we also want to make sure that we are creating a very safe environment for everyone involved. So, that's, yeah, that, so I just want to echo that, and hopefully, like, we can create something where students do feel like they're able to say it and, and voice it. I know you just said earlier, around like, the students that were in that immediate space weren't saying much or anything. There was another student that sort of was not in the spaces, they're the ones that voiced it. So great, so we do have that one leader that did it. So how do we get that voice to these other students, so it doesn't have to get to that point? Doesn't have to be, you don't have to rely on that. So, not necessarily a question, just, you know.
Yeah, we can certainly talk to our building leaders around having an anonymous box where students and staff could express concerns. I've seen them in some schools, like, some schools have them, but like, I can't sit here with a straight face and say that every school has one, but we can make sure that, that building principals and, and our deans of management and ops create that as an option. So, and then, and then communicate it to the school community.
And then the last, I guess, going back to what services are being offered in this, you put the word victims to the students. I know we talked about restorative circles and all that. A lot of times, those bring the offenders and the victims together. But like, is there anything after that? I know some of the discussion around this was about anti-racism training and bringing it down to the front leadership, down to the staff, down to all the staff. What is the timeline to make sure that everyone underneath the, the school building is getting sort of the same education around anti-racism?
Yeah, our goal is, our goal for, for this year is, was a hundred percent of staff get that first module, and we got four more to go. It's like a three, you know, it's a three-year journey around that particular professional development that we're rolling out to all staff. But then our, another goal that we have for next year is that, that principals lead professional development within their own building ten times a year, which includes those two modules that we did, which it includes debrief sessions with the leaders in the building to help unpack and talk about. So, our, our mission, our goal is to get a hundred percent of staff, those module trainings, and then a hundred percent of, of teachers, the, the other ten turnkey sessions that we're asking principals to do. And it, I think it's an unrealistic goal, like, if teachers call out sick during that professional development, they might not have an opportunity to access that. But we can monitor, you know, who's accessing the modules. It's just not the modules. We talked a lot about the equity imperative, but that's just one piece of it. There's probably more profession, there, not probably, there is more professional development going on outside of those modules that the principals are leading themselves. Eight, to be exact, like, eight times next year, principals should be turnkeying some of the professional learning they're getting from, from our, our staff internally and bringing it to their building. And the other two is gonna be unpacking sessions for the two modules that all staff are gonna be taking. But there's, to your point, there's not an end to it, like, you know, everybody, this is a, an equity journey, and, and like, it's never-ending. We're not gonna undo, or we're not gonna like end racism, but the best thing we could do is, is reflect on ourselves and then teach our kids. Like, I think that's the most powerful thing. Hopefully, some of this learning has an impact on, on how we lead as fathers, how we lead as mothers, how we lead as mentors, how we lead as cousins, how we lead as just peep individuals, because the key is really through our youth and, and making sure that they're better than we were.
Thank you. If I get re-elected, I'll probably be back in a year asking the same question, so just to head up.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you. I didn't understand the structure of this like joint school committee situation. And I also didn't understand that our superintendent didn't need to be here. So I, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the transparency and the ability to have these conversations, because they're very important.
Thank you. Mr. Willihan?
Thank you. Thank you for the order. Yeah, I agree, obviously, that, you know, that word really has no place, you know, in our, you know, in our classrooms and our hallways, in the football fields, the playing fields. It really has no place in society, you know, and when you put on a HBO special and you have Chris Rock and half his monologue revolves around that word, you know, it kind of, it kind of cheapens it. You know, it's taking a hateful word and making kind of a joke out of it, making light of it. So that's, that's a problem with our society, in my opinion. I know I read, you know, historical novels in seventh and eighth grade, Huckleberry Finn, To Kill a Mockingbird. You know, and even thinking back, you know, four to five years ago, you know, those are, you know, heavy, heavy topics that dealt with racism, the N-word. And I remember, you know, just at the time, not being uncomfortable, but, you know, thinking of, you know, that was society back then, you know, just, just a hateful, hateful time. You know, so, and then, so I was kind of taught at a young age that, you know, those are, you know, it's, you know, it's, it involves hate. And then I see Chris Rock, he's taking a hateful word, making a joke out of it. So that's, you know, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I'm just saying that's where we where our, you know, social media, et cetera, et cetera, has just taken it. So it's unfortunate, and I agree with your order and what Mr. Soto has, has done with, with, with the school system in terms of just kind of eliminating that. Again, if it's in your heart, it's in your heart. Okay, you can't, can't take something that's your heart away. But just for our school system and our students, it should be, you know, taught that that's, you know, you know, it's not a comedy routine, it's a hateful, hateful thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willihan. Mr. Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, racism, we know it's a very uncomfortable conversation. A lot of people dance around it, try not to talk about it, hide it under the rug, especially hide it under the rug, that's the trouble I have with. But what I know, as a fifty-three-year-old man, that an uncomfortable conversation is the conversation that needs to be had. Because we can't expect to get better if we are not having these uncomfortable conversations. I'm not gonna go into detail about the experience I had last year, because I was appalled. But I will go into detail about my experience going to the Holyoke Public Schools and the effect that it has on me, had on me, and probably to this day with racism, and not just racism, the conducts that teachers, how they behave, how they treat their students. What you put in to a young mind is what you will get out in society in the future. So if you're teaching bullying, making fun of somebody's, the color of their skin, how much money they have, what they do and don't have, whether they're gay, that's, that one was a hard one for me. So when I, when I hear you all speaking, the topic is definitely safe environment, and that it's an umbrella that when we are teaching these children, who will be an impact in society at some point, sometime, where they're either chasing their professional careers, whatever they may, that might be, it all falls back on what they learned in school and how they were treated, right? Because I was constantly reminded that the color of my skin meant something. That when I first got elected into city council, I felt that I had not belonged there. I had this weird posture syndrome, if you will. Like, oh, God, I don't belong here. What are they saying? And to what Counselor Israel Rivera had mentioned earlier, that part like, I don't get that, I don't get that. Because all along, what we had learned when we were in school is that you kind of don't belong because of how we were treated. Now, I don't know, I can't say for sure that for each student, it was intentional. But make no mistake, that any child that gets impacted in a negative way, we will see in the future, just like a butterfly effect. And if we don't address it here and now, it's going to continue. Pointing fingers, oh, this is who you are in society, I can't hang with you. You learn that. You're, you're teaching your children, whether it's at school or at home, these conversations, these uncomfortable- Uh, these conversations, these uncomfortable conversations need to be had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the order? Feel like your order has been complied with?
Yes, like I said, I'm sure I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. You're more than welcome anytime. And to that note too, keep in mind, when you guys get complaints from constituents, you know, all of our information as school board members, our public knowledge. Feel free to pass along our phone numbers, our emails, call us directly with the complaints, you know, we're happy to meet with people too, because. You know, somebody in the district might know you, so they talk to you, they might not know one of us. Um, so they don't come to us, but we're we're always, you know, willing to listen and advocate as well. Alright, so moving on to old business, uh, we have a couple of things that were tabled recently, uh, the J- J R O T C, Junior R O T C. Uh, we were to do a district, uh, survey within a district to see if um. Students or parents wanted to see the return of Junior R O C T, so Mr. Soto, do you have an update on that?
Yes, we did uh survey our students, um. And included it in a survey that had gone out around en- enrichment and opportunities. Um, you know, so, uh, I think fi- I think definitely five hundred and one students at the north. Holyoke High School North Campus. Uh, filled out the survey and about a hundred and twenty-three students at the Dean Campus filled out the survey, and the results are. You know, only at the North Campus, only four point seven percent said that they would definitely. Uh, be interested and um, twenty-seven percent of the hundred and twenty-three students. At the Dean Campus said that they, you know, that they would be interested. Um, you know, uh, there were other. This ranked uh lower amongst other enrichment and and essential opportunities for kids. Uh, the the majority of the students that filled out the survey talked about mu- music, world language. Um, and art being, uh, and phys ed- education being a a top priority for them and and some consumer sciences. Um, and then, so, you know, it was really low in terms of uh student interest. Um, and that, those those are the results there. Um, we also did look at, like, the process for, like, if you can't just start an ROTC program. You actually have to apply to get into it and you have to have, one of the qualifications is you have to have a certain number of students interested. Um, and um, once you do, uh, once you do have that, uh, that criteria, you could. You you apply and then you get put on a waitlist to be a part of the. The the join, you have to prove that you have the space for it, you have to prove that. You have the the staffing capacity for it and that you can sustain the program. Um, once your application gets approved, you get added to like this waitlist. And then they pull from the waitlist based on some of the factors. Um, that 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 are part of the application process. Um, I will say, right, um, you know, at our North Campus right now. With the STEM Middle School co-located their spaces, certainly a a challenge and um. And I'm hoping that we can get a new middle school and move STEM. Middle School students over to, you know, over to a new middle school so that it could free up some. Some space on the Dean Campus as well. But those are the results and that that's the process.
Alright, thank you. It was uh this body that uh instructed to have the survey done, so do we feel like that's been complied with, everybody? Any other comments or concerns?
Counselor Puelo?
Sorry, sorry, you, I think you guys were breaking up, I I, is it my turn or?
Yeah, we were just discussing the ROTC, um, the J ROTC order that you had filed. We just went over it, um, we went over the numbers, um.
Yeah, I I, so I I did see that part, tha- thank you, Counselor Burgos, so I guess. My, I, you know, obviously, I'm a little disappointed in the numbers, I did hear from parents that this was something they were really interested in. Uh, that's why I originally followed the, filed the order, they were disappointed that it had been removed in the first place, but that's okay. Uh, I guess my question is around the survey that was done, I I think that's a really good thing. Can can maybe the receiver or somebody talk a little bit about? What programming the students indicated that they wanted that isn't already offered? Like, for example, when you say language, like, is there a language that isn't already offered that they said they wanted, or was this just a survey saying? You know, do you guys appreciate this language that we already offer?
Um, I think, so the service was more geared towards middle school students uh around like. So as we're going through our rezoning efforts, we it we thought it was important to hear. From our students and from our families, what enrichment, uh, I I hate to use the word enrichment, because. These are really essential programs for our students. But what programs outside of core content areas like uh ELA, math and science. Are are of most interest to them and um. You know, I think the the one that, you know, the one that comes to mind uh around world language. Is, yeah, you're, that that is something that is not offered in every single one of our schools, but. Um, we we plan on having that option available in our middle schools next year, that um, and it was something that was rated pretty high. Amongst our students. Uh, students in the dual language program get access to, you know, the Spanish language acquisition. Uh, but if you're not in a, a, um. In a dual language program, you don't have access to that. And I remember when I was in school, I went to PEC and one of my favorite subjects was. Uh, one of my favorite teachers was Mr. Murphy, he was my science teacher, but he also taught me French, so I could count to ten in French. Don't make me do it. Uh, but that was just something that was, I thought was cool and and students really valued. They also were rated pretty highly, um, you know, uh. The arts, like, not just the performing arts, uh, you know, drama, uh vocal music. Um, eh, depending on what school you go to, like, i- it varies what. What access you have, but we've developed a a middle school schedule. Next year that that uh is gonna allow for all students to get access to. Uh, two s- two different essential programs throughout the entire school year. Um, oftentimes, students are only getting one of those. Uh, for a period of time and and we've developed a schedule where kids will have access to two of them. Um, I think there, another one that came up was consumer. Uh, I think it was called consumer science, you know, financial literacy, uh, cooking. Like, that's, tho- those were some some offerings that came up in the survey. That we currently don't have across the the entire district, so. Um, we wanna, you know, it's it's gonna be a challenge, so we 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 are gonna have. Way more essential programs than we did in our middle schools this year and way more access. But it it is gonna be dependent on our ability to hire staff, so like, I could sit here and say, we wanna have. You know, one school wants to have a a dance and and they don't want. You know, they want performing arts dance, they don't want uh vocal, uh, but it, we might have a vocal teacher there. And and we can't find a performing arts dance, so like, we we wanna make sure that that they have access to one of those. Uh, but it's gonna be dependent at each school, like, what what staffing is available, because. We, you know, we have resources to provide that now, but we, you know, staffing market is really, really challenging. And being able to find, you know, all the teachers that we need to support the students need, uh, wants. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, t- t- two follow ups, just really quick, uh, if you could clarify, cuz I was looking at the slideshow. And I think it's that dean and and North Campus students, but I I think you said middle school students uh were were surveyed, so if you could just clarify. And the second question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I I I was just gonna ask if if we could maybe get a copy of the survey, I think that'd be really cool to look at, just to see. I mean, that that's something I can send out to my constituents too, that requested this, just to see in terms of like what. You know, students are thinking and, you know, I I think that'd be cool to look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I could certainly send you a list of. I could send, I could send you the survey results, we could send that to the entire committee for sure. Um, and I did say middle schools, because some of the, some of the, uh, some of the essentials that. That we have, that, you know, they're, they're already at the high school, like, the high school has a band, they have sports, they have. Um, you know, different clubs, they have lang- world language, they have all of those things. Where we didn't have that stuff is in consistently in our middle schools. Um, and and elementary schools, so we, you know, w- the the question was really around what essentials for the middle schools. But then specifically, we added a question around for, for our high school students, we added added a question around. ROTC based on uh this, the order that we have in front of us today. So I can share both, both results, for sure.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Alright, next for old business is an update on the school building committee, I don't know, did you put together a actual presentation?
I just said, I got Erin Brunel with me, she's gonna give the update.
Um, so I just think, obviously, any opportunity to discuss the school building committee. Uh, in front of any council members is a added bonus, so of course, this is a running agenda item on this uh uh committee. Um, so, a couple of things to point out, we had our first public meeting last night at Hoyoke High. Um, it was pretty well attended, all things considered. Uh, we had a nice presentation, uh, Mount Vernon Group, which is our current designers, were there. Um, we're having a follow-up meeting to that, which will be this Monday. At noon is the Zoom meeting, so if you couldn't attend the in-person meeting, that is a virtual meeting. It's an opportunity to gain information, to look at the overall design of the building, uh, the layout, um. A little bit about the grounds and then our overall timeline. Um, one thing also I wanted to point out is we are coming to city council on April eighteenth. To, with our first, like, formal order for the bond language. Um, obviously, we'll get sent to finance, we're hoping to, uh, we don't have a date that will be on the finance agenda yet, uh. The date that we had hoped for, unfortunately, uh, Counselor McGivern is gonna be, well, lucky for his family, he'll be at his daughter's wedding. Um, so, May third uh was the date that we originally wanted, that won't work. But we expect to be in front of finance um in May sometime, we have. A draft presentation that we've been putting together, we've run it by a a couple counselors already. Um, to kind of get some feedback, make sure that we're answering any questions that the council has. In that presentation, so we would just urge any of the counselors ahead of time to reach out to any of the school building committee members. To reach out directly to uh coun- uh counselor, to Superintendent Soto. So that way, we can make the process of going for the vote, hopefully as smooth as possible. And to help us be as prepared as possible for uh questions and concerns that the council will have. Um, if you'd like copies of the public presentation, you can link to everything through Hoyoke Public School's website. Um, of last night's presentation, and again, it will be on a Monday. Um, that's just a general update, I know we update often, uh, the school building committee is meeting again next Thursday, we meet twice a month. Uh, those meetings are on Zoom as well, so if anybody has any questions or thoughts they'd like to add, but again, we're just looking for. Um, counselors to reach out to us in a advance of our upcoming meeting, uh, to make sure that. Any, you know, questions they're thinking they may have or concerns they may have, we know in advance, so that way we can be prepared as possible. Uh, to not have to hopefully have four council meetings to get this done. Uh, the MSBA, which is this Massachusetts School Building Authority. Meets to, for their vote on the bond language, um. Well, not on the bond language, but they meet, their committee meets in June, so that's when they'll be voting to formally. I mean, we've already been invited into the process, but that's when we'll be like formally. Uh, being given the grant basically for their portion of the funding, so we are looking for the city council to vote ahead of that. Um, but obviously, uh, there's terminology in the vote language. That if for some reason the MSBA decided to not award the grant, obviously, the city is not on the hook. For uh, for funding a project that's not gonna get, get built. Um, so if anybody has any questions or concerns or anything they'd like to know about the school building committee, feel free to ask. No? Okay, great. Uh, so the last, the last item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from. Uh, nine twenty-eight twenty-two, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Willihan on the second, all those in favor, or well, I'm supposed to ask for discussion before I ask all those in favor, any discussion? Yes?
Can we add the accent to my last name, 'cause I'd rather not be colon? Thank you.
Oh, my God. Diversity and inclusion, uh, so, uh, we're gonna formally amend the minutes to, uh, correct. Committeewoman Rivera Cologne's name. Listen, I know she's a doctor, but it doesn't say it there when I look at her name to. Even though I know I know her name, I gotta look at all your names when I say your names, cuz otherwise I say the wrong thing. Okay. Do we have to formally do that? It's a pretty minor change. It's in discussion on the motion, okay, so all those in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Yeah. Um, so I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor on the motion to adjourn? Aye, any opposed? Thanks, folks, we are officially adjourned, I can't see the clock from here, it is eight forty-seven PM. Muchas gracias.